Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the April 4th City Planning Commission meeting. We want to welcome Director Callie Merriman for her first meeting as the Planning Director of the City of Cleveland. So, welcome. And she is going to kick us off and read the preamble before we get going.
Thank you. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's Open Meeting Law in Section 101.021 of the Codified Ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the City Planning Department conduct its meetings, and amendments modeled after Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Recusals from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that online participants use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the Participants Panel on the desktop and mobile version, and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you, and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform.
This is the right one? This one we just read?
Yes, we got that one. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter submitted through proper channels have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Proper channels for comments are listed below. Communication with members of this body must follow proper channels for consideration. Any comments received by the Wednesday noon deadline are collected by city planning staff and disseminated to the commission members prior to any scheduled meeting. Proper channels for public comment are sending an email to thecityplanning@clevelandohio.gov address with a comment or a letter, calling and/or leaving a message at (216) 664-2210, sending a letter or dropping off comments at City Hall 601 Lakeside Suite 501 Cleveland, Ohio 44114. Our meeting rules and procedures are that the chair will call each agenda item and then each applicant will be invited to proceed through their presentation. Each presentation should be completed prior to questions and comments from the commission in order to facilitate a smooth presentation. Once the presentation has concluded, the chair will ask planning staff to summarize design review advisory committee recommendations, if applicable, and any public comments received. Public comments received through the proper channels by the deadline are distributed to commission members prior to the meeting. Staff will also identify any members of the public present and scheduled to speak. Public comment is allowed at the discretion of the chair, and any individual providing public comment is permitted two minutes to speak to the agenda item in which they have an interest. The chair will then request a recommendation from staff, if applicable. The commission will then begin deliberations and project review. Any commission member except the chair will make a motion at any point after an agenda item has been called.
Thank you very much.
Anthony.
Present.
Luker.
Present.
Curry.
Present.
McCray Scott.
Present.
Sargent. And Slade.
So, first item is the approval of the minutes from the March 21st meeting. I'd like to note that I noticed that there is an error on page six that should note that Sergeant was not present, so NP. So whoever make the motion, we need you to actually state that. It's very important. It would change the vote on this matter. So if someone can approve the minutes with the amendment that page six Sergeant was not present.
Madam Chair, I'd like to have the minutes from the previous move meeting approved with the correction on page six with Sergeant not being present.
You have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Luker.
Yeah.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sargent.
Abstain.
And Slade.
And also abstain due to absence.
Motion carries. Yes, we missed you. We liked Councilman Harsh, but we missed you. You're much better. I'm just kidding. I know that's being recorded. Don't tell them. Okay, so that was a joke for everybody online, and nobody's gonna write that. Okay, so there are a few matters that are zoning, either map amendments or zoning matters, conditional use permits. For all zoning matters, they are a public hearing. So I'm going to read one time the rules for public hearings or zoning matters, and they'll apply to all the items. First, we will hear a presentation from staff on any proposed zoning matters. Second, we will hear from sponsors, and that could be the councilperson, the owner, architect, the person representing the change. And then second, I will open it up for public comment. And first, we'll take any comments from those in favor of the zoning change, and then I will take any testimony from opponents. At any time, if you just have a question, you're not there for against, but you want to ask a question, you are also welcome to. Before you give your testimony, please state your name clearly, and your organization or address, or simply your name and address. And since some people will be in person and some people will be online, I will call on everyone, so don't worry, you'll have a chance to speak. And I will look to staff to let me know if anyone is online, just raise your hand and we will call on you. You must keep your statements to three minutes or less so that we can get through the agenda and hear from everyone. And remember that you are to address the chair, not the applicants or staff, and I will direct the questions to those that are, who will answer those questions or comments. So with that, the first item is a zoning map amendment. This is map change 2670, changing the use area and height districts of parcels of land north and south of Lorraine Avenue between Columbus Road and West 32nd Street. This is in Councilman Kerry McCormick's ward, and Shannon is here to present.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair.
Excuse me, Shannon. Sorry. Make sure you tap that square.
There we go. All right. Try that again. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commission. Shannon Monard, Chief Zoning Administrator, Zoning Manager. It's a busy zoning day, so I'm here to try to help move some of these along with other staff. So this first rezoning came to us a couple of years ago, and is really part of a two-phase rezoning with Councilman McCormick and the previous planner for this area, Matt Moss, as well as the current planner, Brittany Pabone. But really, the purpose of it is to promote walkability and support of diversity of housing typologies in alignment with our Connecting Cleveland 2020 Comprehensive Citywide Plan. As you know, this area is the significant area of reinvestment and redevelopment. This is just showing you the support from Councilman McCormick. Sorry, there's a delay on the slides. But as you can see here, this is the proposed zoning, and I'll walk you kind of through it. But what you see in red is what the current zoning is, so as you can see in this area of West 25th and Lorraine, where the West Side Market is, as well as St. Ignatius, kind of those are the borders between the two. There's a mix of two-family, multifamily, varying heights of local retail, limited retail, institutional research, semi-industry, and pedestrian retail overlay district. And so just to kind of walk you through the pedestrian retail overlay, that's really meant for our historic shopping districts. It's an overlay to maintain the shopping character, but the pedestrian-oriented streets, and minimizing the conflicts really between vehicles and pedestrians in our neighborhood shopping districts. So the first, as you can see, this is part of a multi-phase. We're doing the first phase here today. We've talked to most of the institutions, either between the council, Mr. Moss, or the other planner, Ms. Brittany Pabone. And things too will come back before this board after some extensive community engagement. So the first section that we're proposing here is institutional research. This is in and around the St. Ignatius campus, and this is really for, as you know, institutional research is an interesting district. It's a standalone district, so what's permitted in it is things that are within generally of institutional nature, thinking of your medical facilities, institutions, schools, colleges, universities, churches, so a few other places that you have seen institutional research is around the metro campus, the hospitals, as well as Cleveland Clinic, but also other schools such as on the east side, I forget the name of the school, but also around where the Abbey is, the Benedictine Abbey over off of Buckeye, that's zoned institutional research. And what that allows is for the needs of the institution and how they can blend in with the surrounding neighborhood, not only in terms of the residence, but also the commercial retail uses, neighborhood retail uses, and making sure that those uses are compatible. And so the proposal here is to change the campus to institutional research. This allows a variety of single-family, two-family, multifamily housing, as well as neighborhood retail needs. And this is just kind of giving you a context of Lorraine today, as well as the campus itself. The map on the top left is kind of giving you an idea where we're taking these pictures from. Again, this is just another context, looking west along Lorraine. On the bottom corner, we're looking east. The next section here is along West 25th. It's currently zoned local retail. We're proposing limited retail, and that's really just allowing when you're having significant redevelopment, as you're having at this corner, and then public investment into the West Side Market, allowing for the commercial uses to continue to grow here, the retail uses that are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, but also any non-conforming uses, allowing them to continue to remain. But should they expand or be discontinued, they'd have to fit within the retails that is permitted in limited retail. And some of those uses, again, include retail, food stores, restaurants, professional offices, banks, hotels, and other residential uses. This is just giving you some overall context of where we're at. I'm sorry, the delay in the presentation here. Again, just giving you some current context along West 25th Street, looking west. This is also looking north. And then again, looking west down Bridge Avenue, giving context, looking south. And then this West 25th Street, looking west down Carroll. As you can see, there's a mix of old and new development here. This is giving you an overview of where Intro is along Gay Ring and West 25th Street and Abbey Avenue, and this is really important context with the zoning that we're proposing at this location, as well as the RTA station. The current context here is West 25th Street, looking east, and then West 25th Street, looking south. This delay is, apologize. But again, so down along Gay Ring, we're proposing it to be, again, limited retail business C-3, and then adding that pedestrian retail overlay, that's the green section that you see, adding the pedestrian retail overlay, expanding it down in front of Voss, as well as along Gay Ring and Abbey Avenue there, wrapping that building at West 25th and the Gay Ring and Abbey. So that is the culmination of this rezoning. Again, it's to align redevelopment with existing uses, bringing them all together, but also being able to support the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume that the Councilman's not here online, or anyone's speaking. No, okay. So I think we'll open this up. If there is anybody online or here who'd like to speak in favor of this zoning matter, please do so. Can we close the door to mind? Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak against the zoning change or has a question? We'll close the public portion. Commission members, any questions, comments, or discussion?
Madam Chair, it's Shannon. Just a quick question on the institutional research. Some of the examples you provided were primarily academic. Can you speak to if that is primarily the type of institutional research, or could it be other type of research under that zoning?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to the commission member. So institutional research is for academics, but it's also for medical and research and things of that nature. So your doctor's office, your large campus, campuses for medical research, pharmaceuticals, things of that nature are all permitted within the institutional research district. In this instance, though, it's specific to the high school campus, the Jesuit campus.
Disobeyance. Disobeyance. Has nothing to do with the rezoning, it's just how people interpret it, right? Obviously, hospitals are very insular, and they don't promote pedestrians. But schools and campuses like that, obviously, they have people going back and forth to buildings, other activities. So I thought kind of interesting that the two are linked in the same use. I don't know if there's any controls that would enforce a more vibrant pedestrian-oriented area or character.
Thank you, Commission Member Fugger. So this is actually, like I said, a unique section in the code. It's a standalone, so there is, within the code itself, protections as really making sure that the commission has the ability to work with the community and the institutions to ensure that their site design and their campuses are walkable, they're safe, they're pedestrian-friendly, and not only that they lock themselves off from the community, but that they are open within the community, not only serving their patient or client needs or their institution's needs, but also serving the greater neighborhood. And so that's specifically some of the requirements under site design and planning that is within the institutional research district. And there's specific conditions that are laid out within that district.
I just have a general question. I'm very supportive of this, and I think I understand it very well. But if I look at an area of the city that has had quite nice dense development, is evolving, especially on Lorraine, but you know, with the interdevelopment and then down 25th, it raises this question for me of like, why are you changing the zoning? And is there a reason? Is this to make it easier for people to do business? Is this to get a better outcome? What's the driver for it?
Yeah, so the driver is to ultimately, in the end, get a better outcome in terms of making the development move forward. And so, for instance, when we came a few years ago for the Intro redevelopment, we did a site plan-specific rezoning there. So I think along this area here, you have some redevelopment and some buildings that had never previously been in the pipeline, if you will. So we're just really trying to get out in front of it. But also, as the area is along the commercial corridors, there has become vacant property that the various businesses and institutions have acquired. And so as they expand, it'll make development more seamless.
Thank you.
But also have the oversight of this commission.
Madam Chair, I move to approve map change 2670 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slyffe?
Yes.
Motion carries. A second item is map change 2688. This is changing use area height districts of parcels of land south of Interstate I-90 between West 117th and West 140th. This is in Councilman Brian Casey's ward.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commission. My name is Xavier B., I'm a zoning planner with City Plaid. Let's hope the clicker's a little more cooperative here. Okay, so the purpose of this map change is also to promote walkability, diversity of housing typologies, which is in alignment with our Connecting Cleveland 2020 Comprehensive Citywide Plan. Sorry for the typo there. Okay. Here is an attachment of the support letter from Councilman Brian Casey. He's in support, you know, also in alignment with the understanding that this map change will really support the neighborhood in a productive way. And really, we're going to speak more to that as I go through some of these districts. Here's a snapshot where you can see the current zoning. It is a large area, so we're looking at the Jefferson neighborhood just south of 90, in between West 117th Street and West 140th Street. So the current zoning is a mix of single-family, two-family, general retail, shopping centers, semi-industry, general industry, and there's some existing urban form overlays. And so here you can see a snapshot of the proposed zoning. And so I'm going to walk through each of the districts, but you can just get an overall view of what we're really primarily looking at here. Transitioning a lot of the single-family districts to two-family. There's a small parcel adjacent to the RTA's land that they have up there just north of Triscuit Avenue. We're looking at transitioning that to multifamily. Some other business, businesses going on north of Triscuit and south of Lorraine. We're transitioning to limited retail. And a lot of the general industry area where we're transitioning to semi-industry, because a lot of it's, you know, a lot of it's legacy industrial district. And so, next slide's here. Okay, here's an aerial snapshot. You can get an idea here. You know, there's some local amenities. There's Mohican Park, Jefferson Park. You know, this area is very close to, you know, there's transit that goes up and down Lorraine and very close to the interstate. And so we're looking at the two-family area that we're proposing here. So this, you know, allows, generally allows two-family houses, playgrounds, parks, agriculture uses, as long as there are no sales going on, places of worship and public libraries. The main reason for this change is to really bring a lot of the existing homes in the one-family district and two-family district, moving to compliance. Sorry, jumped ahead there. This map I'm about to show here shows you some data that we got from the county of the existing land use. You can see there's a lot of existing two-family homes within those single-family zoning districts, which is the darker orange highlight. The brown highlight shows you the multifamily uses. So that could be three-family homes or four-family walk-up apartments. And the green parcels show you the vacant land. So really, this just shows you, you know, this map change brings a lot of the existing homes into compliance. And the area district where upzoning to D, which really speaks to more modern standards for infill housing, you know, a lot of times we see minor variances come through the Board of Zoning Appeals for a mixed gross floor area. So really, just ushering more development into the neighborhood. Next here, I just have a couple of slides that's showing you the context of the neighborhood. You can see there's the existing single-family homes along West 137th and some of the existing duplexes in a lot of those single-family zoning districts. Next, we're going to jump into the multifamily zoning district. And so this is a parcel of land that's just north of Triscuit. It allows everything, generally, it allows everything that's allowed in the one-family and two-family district. But this actually, you know, allows more of the apartment housing to take place. And currently, this area is zoned semi-industry. And so this parcel land that we're looking at, or actually, this small strip of the end of the neighborhood here is just adjacent to two-family district and actually a daycare center, which is a photo on the bottom there. It's an interesting intersection. This is Triscuit. On the top there, you see this snapshot I took off of the bridge there that's on Triscuit Avenue, looking down into a small valley here where RTA has a station just to the right. And so really, we're looking at this as multifamily to kind of build a buffer between this two-family district and the retail district to the south on Triscuit. Next slide here is going to jump into the limited retail zoning district, it looks like. Yeah, I think I'm going to just exceed and advance. Is that okay? Thanks, Evelyn. So here, we're looking at the limited family, I'm sorry, limited retail F2 zoning district. So this allows a lot of the residential uses, food stores, variety stores, other general retail uses. As you just heard Shannon go into some of the description as well, you know, looking at areas where there's significant investment taking place and really allowing some uses that are more compatible to the neighborhood that's around it. Currently, these areas are zoned two-family, general retail, shopping center, semi-industry. So there's a high splash of zoning here, so we're also consolidating these split zoning districts. Next slide, please. And so this next slide, you're going to see the general area where we're changing the zoning. On the top photo there, there's currently a Huntington Bank and an event center. And so this is just at the intersection of Triscuit and Berea. Right now, it's zoned semi-industry. And so it makes more sense to see this as a retail use instead of industrial as the neighborhood. As you see on the picture on the right there, is the neighborhood just across the street. You know, semi-industry isn't too compatible, you know, directly across the street from residences. And on the bottom photo, you see the shopping center right there along Lorraine. That piece of land that is actually mixed, split zone between single-family, general retail, and shopping center. And so there's already an urban form overlay there. So, you know, we're looking at like in the future, potentially, if this land was to be redeveloped, you're consolidating that split zoning situation. Next slide, please. This last district we're going to go into is semi-industry F2. And so right now, it's general industry. And so you can see just off of this photo, it's directly adjacent to a lot of the residential neighborhood there, in between Lorraine and Triscuit Avenue. And so again, it's just more, it makes more sense contextually, you know, ushering more compatible uses into that neighborhood. A lot of things that are existing there right now also fall under the general use categories of semi-industry districts. There's, you know, there's indoor storage, auto repair, things of that nature going on. And so other uses that aren't currently, or aren't permissible in the semi-industrial district that grandfathered in. Next slide, you're going to see a lot of the context photos we shot. If you're there, thank you. And so in the top photo, you see just south of Triscuit Road, as I mentioned, some of those auto shop uses. Center photo, you see we're also proposing here the urban form overlay to go north up West 140th. And that's really to make sure that we're fostering more of a high level of walkability in this neighborhood. And so currently, there are two gas stations there in the corners. And so, you know, this being semi-industry, it's still allowed use for gas station. But in the future, we would really want to see those gas stations actually fronting the street, you know, wrapping the corner, and then placing the gas pumps in the rear. The bottom photo, you see continuing north up West 140th Street, a lot of the automotive uses there. I think that's it. Next slide. And we're just going to recap the general map here. Really, you know, providing more contextual and compatible uses for the neighborhood here in the Jefferson neighborhood. And now I'll take any questions that you might have.
First, we're going to take the public comment. First, we'll take public comment, and then if the commission has questions after that, we will ask them. So first, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this zoning change? Or online?
It looks like we have a hand from Melissa.
Melissa?
Madam Chair, I'm the director of the Jefferson Puritus West Park Community Development Corporation. We are in favor of these zoning changes. They are overall beneficial to the neighborhood. They consolidate a lot of mixed zoning that currently is there. And they also align with the current land uses in the neighborhood, which is important for us to keep what we want there. I think that downzoning some of the semi, the general industry to the semi, to semi-industrial is very important when it is so close to residential neighborhoods. Taking it from a single-family, the residential neighborhoods from a single-family to a two-family neighborhood is important for a few reasons. I mean, that the houses have been there longer than the zoning has been in place, and there have been issues in our neighborhood over the past few years with people trying to sell double homes in a single-family district where they've had issues with getting proper financing because the home doesn't align with the current zoning. And on Triscuit, keeping that corner limited local retail when the rest of that, the northern side of the street, is semi-industrial is important just to make sure that those land uses, that the residents right across the street from, if those parcels change hands, then it will still be a local retail use and then can't be transferred to something like a semi-industrial use. So that is why we are in favor of this zoning map change and have worked hard to try to align our zoning map changes with our zoning with the current land use and the future land use in the neighborhood. Especially the, it is important also on West 140th Street. West 140th Street is going to be redone in 2027. And I think we are looking for it to be more walkable, to be more friendly to pedestrians as well as cyclists. And these map changes will help guide that process through. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Anybody else in favor of the zoning change? Okay, anybody opposed to the zoning change? All right, we'll close the public portion. Commissioner members, questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the map change at 2688 as it was presented.
Second. A motion and a second. I'll call the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Fugger?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slyffe?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all. So for the next, we're going to, we have, the next item will actually be three. So we're going to do this in the spirit of Mr. August Fugger as one, who likes to hear everything together, which is correct. So for the next one, we have a zoning matter. We have a design review case, and we also have a demolition. And these are for the Cleveland Clinic Fairview Hospital expansion. So what I'm going to do is we're going to hear the zoning matter first, and then we'll hear the design review, actually, before I'm going to take public comment. I want everyone to hear everything, both the zoning matter, as well as the current state of the design and the demolition. And then we'll open it up for public comment, and then we'll deliberate. We will need three separate motions on the three separate matters, and I'm going to read them right now. And second is, the applicants who are here to present on the design review matter, can you raise your hands? There are just two of you that are here today. Do, I'm going to need to swear you in, too. There's nobody online as well that's speaking to this? Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury? Okay. So the first item is a map change 2679. This is changing the use area and height districts of parcels of land north and south of Lorraine Avenue between Rocky River Drive and Valley Parkway. Okay, so, and then the second item, which we will hear after, which is the Cleveland Clinic Fairview Hospital Expansion 2024-14. And this is new construction, and this is here for schematic approval. You can also see in your agenda that it went to local design review, and there are a number of bulleted approval with conditions. I'm not going to read them all, but I want you to take a look at them as they're presenting, which are bulleted here, which came from local. And then the third item is FW202505, which is the Cleveland Clinic FHC and Mall Center Demolition Project. That's at 1870, or sorry, 18200 Lorraine Avenue. So you can cover the demolition as you present the design review case. So with that, we're going to turn it over to you, Shannon, first on the zoning presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This will be the final rezoning that we have here for today. So again, this is for changing use area height districts of parcels. Oh, I forgot. Yes, the rezonings.
Oh, I forgot. Yes, the rezonings, the zoning, we do have a conditional use, I apologize. Okay. Again, so this is along the north and south of Lorraine between Rocky River and Valley Parkway. The purpose of this rezoning is to consolidate a variety of zoning districts into one comprehensive district, really to ensure future development meets the community needs in a cohesive and coordinated way and to align that institutional investments with proper zoning that complements the residential mixed use character of the neighborhood. Next slide, please. So the current zoning here, as you can see, we're primarily focused in the pink along Lorraine between the Valley and Rocky River Road on the north and south. It's currently zoned local retail as well as multifamily and single family. And then there's also additional shopping centers as you get closer to Rocky River. Next slide, please. And so this is giving you the current context. On the south side is the Fairview Hospital's current complex. That's their main hospital. And on the north side is the mall center and I believe family health. And then the residential, and then there is some neighborhood retail as you go towards Rocky River on Lorraine. Next slide. And so I'm just going to walk you through each of these districts here. What you're looking at on the north side and the south side. So the south side, the current zoning is local retail for the current hospital, excuse me. And then we're on the north side, it's currently a mix of local retail, multifamily and single family. What we're proposing is to change it to institutional research D3 so that it's consolidated across the campus. I am so sorry. Again, that our institutional research district is really for our large scale institutions. Previously, you saw it for the high school campus. But again, this is another use for it. And really, the driving purpose of it is to ensure it is a standalone district, is to ensure that, you know, that the property owners or the institutions themselves can serve their institutional needs, but also cater to the community surrounding it. And so that is a way for the city to ensure that not only can they have the main uses, but the accessory uses that a place like a hospital requires, whether that's small doctor's offices, whether that's supply shops, all of those things, but also providing a way for there to be accessory uses such as coffee shops, barber shops, you know, salons, delis, things of that nature that not only serve that institutional's interest, but also the neighborhood's interest. That way, they can serve the people that are visiting the institution, but also that the residents that live within and around the institutions can also be served appropriately and in a cohesive and coordinated way. And so you'll continue to see that for the other parcels that we're proposing to zone institutional research. This is just giving you those, the large part of the campus area, what that looks like currently as of today. Next slide, please. And so again, further down Lorraine, these are a few more parcels. We're proposing institutional research, but we're bringing down the height district here. And that is so that as you buffer in alignment along Lorraine going towards Rocky River. And then again, allows smaller parcels, you wouldn't want that large. But height district here is a 60 foot. And again, that's allowing not only for the institution, but also allowing residential to continue here on more mixed use type buildings. So for existing mixed use and future mixed use to allow maybe residential on top and maybe some accessory retail or standalone retail on the first floors in an alignment with the street. Next slide, please. So again, this is just giving you some existing context, so bringing some of these uses in alignment with the Connecting Cleveland 2020 Plan as well as the the plan for this site. And then here, we have a mix of, the current zoning is a local retail C1. We're just proposing to change it to local retail D2, and that's really just to keep it cohesive on the south side of Lorraine and be able to serve as a buffer between the commercial corridor going into the residence to the south. Next slide, please. Again, this is just going to be some context of what's existing here. So you have some restaurants and some other uses. Next slide, please. So this is the proposed zoning, really just changing the variety of districts into institutional research to, you know, really be able to get out ahead in front of investments. I know one of the questions that came up in a community meeting was, you know, why don't you just zone this as we go or as the institution brings developments? And I think it's really important to look at this in a holistic way, knowing that they're growing, knowing that they have proposed developments and making sure that not only was the zoning there, because while we have design review, the institutional research has requirements as it relates to open space, site planning, design, neighborhood development and collaboration with this commission. So for that, this is the proposed rezoning.
Thank you. For the presenting the design review, you can come up. And both of you might want to come up here and grab grab another chair. And we'll turn your mic on, you know, show them how to turn it on to go ahead and go through the design review.
Madam Chair, as I recall, we've seen this before, correct?
We have.
Okay, so can we take that in consideration? I mean, in terms of not making it a long, detracted presentation, but focusing on the items that are before us in terms of design review? I mean, overview is important, but you understand what I'm saying.
I do. Go ahead. Yeah, just hit the green button. I sent your name and your affiliation.
Matt McCrayle, representing the Cleveland Clinic.
Andy Lane, representing Cannon Design, the architects for the project. We're here today, obviously, to talk about the the schematic design presentation. We're looking to get general building massing, footprint layout on the site and sort of site circulation flows reviewed. We will. We'll have the.
You might want to just say next slide.
So today, we're going to review some of the comments you talked about that you, I think you have in front of you. So we won't spend a lot of time, I think you're all reviewing that, but we heard from the conceptual review.
Could you speak up? It's kind of hard here.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So if I can turn this, what does this help? So we'll talk a little bit about the some, we'll review the submission comments we got from the last review, talk, address those and some of the parking flows we'll talk about today. We'll talk about the underground potential of the site, maybe some investigation on that, why we, why that becomes a challenge for us. Talk about some of the enhancements to landscape and enhancement in the site. And then also start to share a little bit of our initial thoughts on the design aesthetic of the building. Again, very early on in the process, so not meant to be final at all. Our next slide. So these are the comments, and if you have them in front of you, I won't go through and reread them. So, okay, so we can go past that slide to the next slide, please. And just for reference, we're just kind of, again, orienting people into the room. Our location is in the far west side of the design review district of the far west region of the area we're in. That yellow dot represents where we're at, right on the bluff of the Rocky River. So next slide, please. Yep. Our current site layout, you can see how the parking is distributed across the campus. We're at the mall center and the Center for Family Medicine is where our site, we're calling that Site A, is where we're proposing to put the building. That's, this slide shows where that is. We did look at distributing the parking a lot to different sites. Because one of the questions was, have we looked at that? We did look at that. Lot E is one of those locations. We had severe height restrictions that prevented us from doing anything additional there. We looked at Lot D, and the size of that site was not conducive to an efficient or effective parking structure of any sort. Plus, there's no place to really get ingress and egress off that site without having severe complications of traffic back up and congestion along Lorraine. So where we put the parking structure, we feel is the best case for efficient, effective parking within this whole overall campus. Excellent. We did do additional have different, we talked about the parking and the transportation there. We did have additional meetings with the city, planning and transportation. And we talked a lot about what would happen on that road, the transportation meetings. They're still reviewing ways to maybe improve whether signal timings or intersections at 179th and Lorraine to make the traffic patterns flow more smoothly through there. That's still being viewed and investigated by the city transportation. So we're very open to those ideas. And there's many other, there's a few other things they're looking at, too, as far as, well, Elean and 179th Street connect. As we look at holistic flows of the site, pedestrian and vehicle, here you're seeing we're bringing a lot of the public traffic north on 179th to enter the parking structure. We are having more of the service drives to the west and to the north, very much more calm, less less amount of traffic on those locations. We're keeping all the busy activity pedestrians to the south side along Lorraine. So we're trying to activate that streetscape. We're talking, you'll see on the right, lower right hand part of the drawing, we have a, previously, we showed a small parking lot there, surface parking lot. We are now considering that as part of the comment, what does that look like if it became green space? That is now shown, that is an investigation. We're still studying what that means to the overall parking count and how that might tie into the overall campus parking counts. But that is now being considered and then shown here for reference. We are considering moving some crosswalks along Lorraine to help with pedestrian friendly crossing of Lorraine between the hospital and the parking structure, which is below the bridge on the surface level. And obviously, we have a bridge we're proposing to go back and forth for those people who don't want to interact with vehicular traffic. We have, again, the blue arrow shows how when you enter the parking structure, you enter into that main public space along the south. And that is to show, that is to have all that main circulation, public waiting, throughput of that building to be along the edge, again, trying to make that the the urban landscape, urban front of the building, keeping more of the calm landscape buffers around the other sides of the building. The, we've talked to city planning as well and transportation about bus stop locations and traffic lights along there. And so we're still in those negotiations about the right locations. Those currently showing that we still have transportation drop offs right by the front door along Lorraine Avenue. And I think that is primarily just that. Again, we're, we are showing some additional landscape features like healing gardens on the west. Again, trying to pull the metro parks through the site, the experience of green, green space all the way from the metro parks around the river into the buffer zones between the neighborhood. Next slide, please. So one of those things you mentioned, you heard me, I talked a little about the bridge. We're talking about connecting the two sides of the campus. And we did do a lot of studies about what the potential would be to go below ground with some of these, whether it be the tunnel or a parking structure. And what this slide starts to show is the start of our, start to our study here. And we did soil borings to figure out what that would mean from an excavation standpoint to do something like that. And so you can see there the three spots where we took soil borings. And on the right, where it says the geo model, what you see that number five, it gets into a soil type called weathered shale. And also below that, we have a bedrock shale. And that shale is very, very unstable when it becomes exposed to natural air and heat and moisture. So it becomes a very, very challenging, destabilizes the existing geotech area. But it also becomes very expensive and takes a lot of heavy duty equipment to rip out and potentially even at some points could be, you know, might require some explosive things to get rid of. So we're trying to minimize the reason, trying to minimize that kind of disruption to the site. So there's, there's technical reasons we are trying to avoid doing that, that is some of them. There are operational issues when we start to think about ripping that soil away or digging into that soil. Again, if we have to do anything that requires heavy machinery or explosives that causes heavy vibrations, we have to maintain an existing cancer center. That cancer center has MRIs, has linear accelerators, they have very sensitive equipment that could disrupt patient care, but it also could disrupt existing foundations and existing buildings. So and so we don't want to do that. We want to make sure we preserve both existing structures and the patient care that we have going on while we're doing the construction. Not to mention the fact that if we were trying to do something underground across Lorraine, we'd have to shut down Lorraine for an extensive amount of time. That would cause some severe traffic headaches and snarls and reroutes during that time. This is just example, the the type of soil we're talking about, the weathered shale. Because it becomes so, there's a mineral under called pyrite. That becomes very expansive when it's exposed to weather. Right now, it's obviously below ground, but when you expose it to moisture and weather conditions, it starts to be very expansive. This is a condition in the existing hospital where they tried to build in that layer of zone. And it's created a great amount of rework that the slab started heaving, they had to rip it all out and go dig out. So it became very expensive and costly to go back and try to fix that scenario. So again, trying to avoid that layer of soil is very critical to the long term success of the project. Next slide, please. This is a cross section that starts to also talk about some of the challenges if we were to think about a tunnel to go to link the parking structure to the existing hospital. So there are utilities in the way on Lorraine as well. So to build under there, we have to relocate a significant amount of existing utilities, that's like sewer, electrical, those types of lines. And there's not a good way to do that without some severe financial commitments. And not even sure there's a good way to do it at all. Then we don't have any place on the existing hospital side of the building to even receive that tunnel. We'd have to figure out a way to put new stairs, elevators, whatever into an existing basement. How do you build below that existing basement in that bad soil? It's very, very challenging. So we, you know, that bedrock shale there and that ripable shale, we don't, or that weathered shale, we're just trying to get, it's just a big mess. We don't want to get into it. And also, just as we're talking about on this side, you can see, because we're so close to the bluff as it goes to Rocky River, the more you dig, the more destabilized that cliff becomes. And because that soil is very unstable, once you get into it, we're trying to avoid any kind of complications of destabilizing that bluff as it looks over the Rocky River. We're even doing things like we're doing auger cast pile, caissons, instead of like anything where you have to dig out foundations or any kind of driven piles, because we're trying to minimize that disruption, that vibration, that noise to the, all the existing surrounding structures and our patients. So again, technical reasons, operational reasons. Another operational reason to think about is as we're thinking about wayfinding. If you do anything below grade, that becomes disorienting to patients and visitors. They don't, they don't recognize where they're at, they're below grade. So it becomes a wayfinding challenge. We're trying to keep things above grades, people can see where they park, see where the buildings are going to. They always have a frame of reference of their wayfinding throughout the campus. And it's a very, it's a preferred method as we're trying to avoid confusion for our staff and visitors and patients. Next slide. So as part of the way to to help mitigate the overall height and impact of the building, this is sort of slide showing some of that progression when we first started thinking about this way along, back in May of 2023. We had a seven level building and then a six level garage. We then started to, we realized, we started working with that thing, how we make that smaller. So in 2024, we were able to pull the building away from the neighbors closer to the southwest edge of the building. We also were able to spread the building footprint out slightly. So we dropped at a level of the, of the cancer center and medical office building. We also were able to make the parking deck slightly wider and footprints, we were able to drop that slightly. And then as we developed it further, we, the clinic realized there were some spaces they could pull out of the building to make the building smaller. So some of the clinical functions they originally were planning to go on the building, they decided to move it elsewhere and within the community. That then allowed us to make the building smaller yet. So it'd be getting up to four levels and a five level of parking structure because we didn't need as much parking once we moved some of those spaces out. So there's been a consistent effort to make the building smaller, less and less less in scale and sits better within the community than originally was conceived. And again, more and more of this, we're trying to keep the building as far to the south and to the west as possible to avoid as much as we can disrupting into the existing neighborhood. And we're creating there on the right, which you see the March of 2025, that real nice green buffer space between our space and especially the neighbors on 178th Street. Next slide. This is a bit of a landscape play. You asked us to talk a little bit more about the landscape and the experience around the building. So along the rain, you can see we're planning for trees and green space that helps, again, link the metro park bucolic setting of the river through, along Lorraine into, as it transitions towards the neighborhood, showing the green space where we had a surface parking lot there, we used, we were calling it Lot C last time, what that might look like as a transition point. The buffer space across from where the garage entrance, again, a nice park. We are developing that park. It is not, that is not meant to be a final design. We're going to work with the community to find the right response there. But it is a nice generous space that will be green and a nice buffer zone. And then as it moves north to Elean and west on the north side of 179th Street there, we are committed to doing some significant landscaping there as well, again, to help tie that in and create a screen, visual screen from the neighborhood to our building. The images on the left there, you're just seeing some of the plantings. We are also going to add some softer materials, visually softer materials, warmer materials along the streetscape or more pedestrian friendly scaled pavers, and instead of just all concrete and and paving, so that'll help with some of the place setting. And then there's a lot of variety of trees, etc., that you'll see as we're starting to think about how we start to landscape that. This is just a reminder of how the building is positioned. We talked a little bit earlier about trying to keep the yellow space you see in the stack diagram on the right. That is all the public spaces. Those are all trying to face Lorraine Avenue, again, trying to make that the busy active space for the community on on that space. As we move back, the more clinical spaces where patients are getting treated. As we move back, the more clinical spaces where patients are getting treated, their views to the, to the Rocky River Valley. And the more calm spaces as you move back to the west and to the north. The garage is always on the east side of the building. And then obviously on the second floor, we have the connection that goes back to the hospital, which allows for staff and patients and families to move back and forth without having to cross traffic on Lorraine Street. Next slide. So our initial thoughts on the building. So one of the things we recognized about the natural setting, the cliffside, we thought was very intriguing. There's a very horizontal feel to that stone cliffside as you look along from the Rocky River up. We're trying to keep some of that horizontal flow to our building that kind of mirrors the, to the existing context of that nature. We were, we're looking again on Lorraine Avenue, showing there's some trees along that avenue, some plantings at the streetscape scale. Trying to make that more open, we're going to have that glass be much more transparent. So you'll see in and out, you'll see more of the art program inside the main lobbies. So that'll become a very active space and have some, a lot of that sort of like art gallery feel as you walk through there. You can see from the outside or go inside. As you move up the building, it becomes more clinical space, the waiting areas, the, the main circulation for the public are still facing Lorraine. And the views on the corner of the west there, look out over the Rocky River Valley. You were, we were asked to show a screening to the garage. Here you're seeing we, we added a screening element to the garage. It's a, it's a durable mesh screening that we would, it would allow light to trans, to filter through daylight, to filter through and air to filter through, but it screens the visibility of the cars from within. And also kind of change the proportions of the building slightly. Glass, the metal panels, again, we, you'll see they'll have some, we have some horizontal reveals to those panels, again, trying to pick up on the horizontality of the stone and the, of the, of the river, river edge and the rock bluff. And then the, you know, the glass along that Lorraine, again, trying to show it as a public space that ties the inside to outside communication. As we move the north elevation, that becomes a much more calm space, a more quiet space, more private space. That's the side that faces the neighborhood. So we're trying to keep that much more subdued. But again, seeing that we're going to have significant landscape planting there on that face of the building to help screen that from the neighborhood. On our west elevation, that's the side that faces the river. Again, that's mostly patient care areas on those windows. So again, responding to the horizontality of the, of the, of the rock face outcropping. And also to help with, make it seem a little, you know, the horizontal moves, make it seem a little more, less, less vertically imposing. And then we have a small drop off for ambulance patients or service patients that might need to get in. There's some sort of patients right there on the side, or really it's not ambulance, it's a, if somebody comes from a nursing home to get infusion treatments from a cancer perspective. It's a very small modest interest, but it allows them to get in the building without crossing the public entry points. The east elevation that faces one seventy ninth street there, again, very heavily landscaped around the edge, the garage fully screened. The stair tower there on the left is the one facing Lorraine, again, trying to show that, that marking an entry point and the bridge there that crosses Lorraine at a height above that allows any kind of obviously emergency vehicles and transportation considerations to pass underneath it safely. The materials we're discussing, you can see here more in the renderings. We have obviously glass, some metal panels, again, showing that horizontality. The glass in the bottom would be again, a more ultra clear glass, so you can see into the building better. So there's not as much reflectivity as you move up the glass, a little more reflectivity, both to help with energy and to kind of help. It, it, it shares with some of the, it reflects some of the natural elements of the site. So we, we think that's a nice response, it's some frit potentially for help with bird collisions, those kinds of things. The materiality of the metals and the glass respond across the street to the building context of the Fairview Hospital today. This is at the east end of the building, again, the main two story space lobby there on the left, again, very public space meant to be interactive with the streetscape. The garage in the background screened and then the stair tower as a beacon to kind of mark as a bookend to that site, to that site to cause a wayfinding element to people approaching the campus from the east. Next slide. Again, here it is, the bridge, we can see on the left hand side, the existing hospital. So that glass is trying to start to represent the context between the two sides of the, of the campus. You see, start to see some of the elements along Lorraine Avenue there, the trees, the greenscape along the rain. So it's meant to be soft, again, trying to pull some of that greenery and bucolic setting of the metro parks through along the public side along that space. And then the, the two story space and the bus stop all kind of works along the main entry there, pedestrian entrance along Lorraine Avenue for the new building. Again, there was a question for us to add, to ask about what is, what does the streetscape look like along the rain? So here, we're just going to take you through a few slides showing what that starts to progress and looks like as you go east to west along Lorraine. As context, you know, the existing Fairview on the left. Right now on the right, you see the green space, we had lot C before, we'd said it was surface parking at one time. Now we've converted that more to a green space. Here you get one seventy ninth street in the rain, again, you start to see the screening with the landscape elements as on one seventy ninth there, and you can start to see the bridge starts to act as a real gateway into our campus. Again, green space along the rain, trying to wrap that around the whole building. So it doesn't look like there's ever like a space where you're just up against a concrete wall. Soften that streetscape, but it's still keeping it very lively. This is even further down, looking, just standing on the south side of Lorraine, looking north where the bridge ties in, where the two story space connects. And then even where we have the main entry to the garage, again, softening that, that space and that experience up with green space, but also any, any of the walls you see there at the bottom of the garage, those are high enough so they block any sort of auto vehicle headlights or anything like that. So you don't see those headlights as they drive through the garage in the, obviously not hours where you need those. This is a view looking back to the south from just like one seventy ninth and Elean. So again, trying to keep as much of the historic growth trees there behind those homes. And then adding to that landscape as a buffer to kind of screen that view. And we are still working with the city to talk about what, what that transition is at Elean and one seventy ninth. One time we were showing that is potentially closed down. That script, that particular image is just showing it is still open. They're still debating whether it could be a raised crosswalk, it could be bollard. It is not our decision, that is a city transportation decision. So we are in conversations with them about that. But we are very flexible to whatever the community and the city decide is the best option there. We feel we can support the direction they want to go. Next slide. This is just the west element, this again, the service, they have an amulet service, kind of the, they bring patients in, that's the west entry. But the little pocket healing garden park there, just, just to the west of that entry. And looking back now to the east, our bridge is a, again, a kind of a landmark as, as we come into the building, it starts to signify entry into the campus and this region. And then at night, we just showed an image at night as the building starts to say, starts to really lend itself inside to out along that streetscape. So it doesn't become at night, doesn't become a unsafe space, it becomes more of like a, a really nice space to walk in either day or night. So the next slide, that might be it. So that was that, so I hope that was fast enough.
It's very good. So here, we're going to pause here, maybe have you go back to seats or seats because we're going to have people who are going to testify, use your microphone. So, and we'll probably have you come back during the discussion.
Do the demo first or you want to?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, just show us the demo real quick, yeah. Um, is, is that not there? Oh, it's there. You can just show us this slide real quick, yep. And you can go through this really quickly.
So this is showing the existing conditions of the site. In order to do our project, because we have to keep patients receiving care as we build our building, it needs to be a phased demolition. We have the Center for Family Medicine and the Mole Cancer Center, the Mole Cancer Center has to maintain. So what we're planning to do first is demo the, the family medicine building while Mole Center stays in, stays in place. Tear that down and then when we build the new building, which includes the new cancer center, then we'll be, we'll have that operational and we'll come back and tear down the Mole Cancer Center and that's where the parking structure goes long term. So that's, that's, that's that piece of the building.
But you're asking for the demolition now?
Yes.
Okay, got it, okay.
And I would say that it's meant to be very sequential, we, it's not going to be a long gap between the two, as soon as the building's up.
Oh, got it, got it, got it. Okay, thank you, all right, move back one. And now I'm going to open the public portion of the meeting. So the, that was from, that was from her. Is, so first we're going to take anyone who is in favor of the zoning change or anybody who has a question. I'll call on you, ask you to come up, state your name and address and speak for three minutes or less. So first, is there anyone online or here, I think I see David Robinson, you can go first.
Thank you so much, can you hear me okay?
You can.
Great, my name is David Robinson, I am the Executive Director of West Park CAM's Neighborhood Development. I want to thank the Planning Commission for spending time with us this morning on three very important aspects of this Cleveland Clinic. Really a replacement project for the mole center and the parking garage. And I wanted to speak in favor of the zoning changes primarily. We really believe setting the zoning changes back to the, to the use is very important for really level setting the existing conditions. As previous zoning conversations this morning took place. You know, the conditions of the clinic property now don't conform to the current zoning. And so using that D three will put that initial area back into what the, what is actually being used by those properties. And we're very supportive of the step down to the institutional two as it buffers between much shorter buildings in the heart of CAM's Corners area. I don't know if you wanted to speak to other elements, but that's our thoughts on.
Anybody else who would like to speak in favor of the zoning change? Okay, anyone who's opposed to the zoning change, who would like to speak? Okay, you come up first or? I've never seen. Right, so just have a seat, it, it's on, so you're good to go. And would ask everyone address the chair and three minutes or less, thank you.
My name is Wally Grossman. I've been a resident of West Park since nineteen fifty six. And, and back in the seventies, when the hospital started to expand, there was a lot of complaining and bitterness coming from the south side of the hospital where the hospital was expanding and commandeering city streets and properties. With the last expansion, which was about fourteen years ago, the hospital made us all kinds of promises, which they failed to live up to. And the, the zoning commission at that time denied them the location of a helicopter pad over the expansion. And the hospital ended up getting their helicopter pad where they wanted it by going to the Ohio Supreme Court. As a result, for the last fourteen years, we've had to contend with the god awful racket of helicopters passing low over our houses all hours of the night. And now, and that, that pales in comparison to what they wanted to do now. The addition that they want to put on now is obviously too big for the property that they have. For them, it's no problem, they just want us to make all the sacrifices. They want to use one hundred and seventy ninth street as a private, a private driveway to their new parking garage. This is a street, right now, it's the only safe street that we can use to exit the subdivision. There's a traffic light there. The other two exits are like taking your life in your hands to get onto Lorraine Avenue. So the only safe one is one hundred and seventy ninth. They want us to give that up to the, the city to give it up to them to use as a private driveway and cut off our access to Lorraine through one hundred and seventy ninth. And there's a family still living on one hundred and seventy ninth, a family that has some disabilities. So that's something that really needs to be considered. Due to the reevaluation of our, our real estate, our taxes are going to be going up considerably in, in July. That's fine for other neighborhoods, but for us, we're going to be paying more taxes. But our actual desirability of our property will be going down because of the expansion and eyesores that the, that the hospital wants to put up. The hospital acquired all the houses on one hundred and seventy nine through the years. And first on the west side, and they put up a parking lot. Now, on the east side, they acquired most of these houses in the early part of the two thousands. So from two thousand five, two thousand six onward, they acquired these properties. And the first property or two that they acquired were acquired by stealth. People thought they were selling their houses to an individual or to a couple when actually, actually the property was bought by the hospital. And once those properties were acquired, the hospital becomes the only buyer. Now there's one property left, plus a business on the, on the other side of one hundred and seventy nine towards Lorraine. The properties that were acquired were rented. And from two thousand five, two thousand six on, they were neglected, terribly neglected to the point where the east side of one hundred and seventy nine became a slum. And we have video and pictures to, to prove what I just said. Now, the other day.
You're at four minutes, so.
Well, I'm in the hospital, it took a lot longer than that.
I know, but everybody is going to get a chance.
We don't have that many, we don't have that many.
Oh, wait, excuse me, everybody has a chance to speak.
Okay, all right, bottom line, bottom line. The hospital wants to take a street away from us and I strongly object to that. If the hospital can't provide access to their new buildings on their own property, then the whole thing should be disallowed. And they're, and they're going to continue, if they get one hundred and seventy ninth, they're going to continue their march eastward until they have the whole subdivision, all the way up to CAM's Plaza. All, all of the traffic that they want to go on one hundred and seventy ninth is going to end up from and to Lorraine Avenue. So the congestion will just be a little more out of their way than if they, if they put it on their own property. This is wrong and, and it's just dishonest to, to the people that are living there.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, yes. I, I have some.
Letters?
Well, they're petitions.
Okay.
Yeah, signed by the residents.
Hand them down, thank you. All right, are you next? We'll just go anywhere.
Hello. I'm Douglas Bear Diavonda. Throwing my hands around. One of what Dr. Grossman said, the proposed structure on the site of the Mole Cancer Center is simply too large for the site. The Mole Cancer Center is forty seven thousand square feet. They're proposing to build over half a million square feet of parking structure, a new Mole Cancer Center and an office tower. So large, if you look at it, it simply is a block that takes up the entire site. They can't even fit their own driveway, their own traffic onto that land. Their own traffic onto that land. And they'll make no provision to allow anyone seeking cancer treatment. There's no way to be dropped off at the door of the Mall Cancer Center. There's no valet accommodation. They have to go in the parking garage, go down almost three quarters of a city block, simply to seek treatment. Yet they hold up the cancer patients as a cancer. Some of them with cancer. I go to Sidemen's. I can tell you, I resent when they talk so warmly about. Cancer people needing to be treated, yet they make no provisions at all. They have been predatory in acquiring properties in our neighborhood. As Dr. Grossman said, they allow them to rot, to decay. You have no one else to sell your home to. They're the only buyer. I think any change of zoning should exclude. The south side of West one seventy ninth street or of Lorraine Avenue. They talk about coffee shops and museums. But with your previous presentation. With that same district, they said hotels, mental health facilities. And we know the clinic has long range plans. And we, as people who have lived in this neighborhood for decades. Don't know what they're going to do next. This is my third time coming down to try. Third construction thing, trying to just preserve. My neighborhood in Lorraine Avenue in the CAM's Corners area from just becoming an institutional fortress. There is no way that it engages or encourages residents, pedestrians. It's an insular thing that may work beautifully on the inside. It's a horrible design on the outside. And it needs to be. You simply can't put a thousand car parking garage. Onto that site. It needs to be divided, and they know that. But they figure, we'll take the city street. It's a stake in the heart. Residential enclave, and there is no provision made. To protect the residents. Everything is stacked, all the zoning. Everything presented that just allows this continuous march. And we, as the people who paid taxes and maintained our neighborhood for decades, are just supposed to sit by. And I don't understand how zoning. Planning or anything else assists the residents. It all just seems to be, well, we don't want anything to do with this. And with all due respect to West Park CAMs, very nice people, but of course, they're funded by the clinic. So they're going to support anything the clinic wants for our area.
You're also at four minutes.
Oh, really?
Thank you.
I appreciate it. That's it. I have pictures.
You can hand those there. Do you want to go next? Thank you. Let's take your name and address. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Christopher Knoll. I live at one seven six two two A Lane Avenue on the bend by the proposed project. I do understand possible expansion. We all get that. It's the scope and the structure of the project itself, number one. You're you're building, as of right now, I'm going to talk about the parking garage explicitly. You're showing it at eighty feet right now with the surface lot on top. You're going to be putting street lights or lighting on top of that parking structure. You're going to have probably a ninety foot structure by the time you're including the lights when you're done. Towering above a neighborhood. It's and lighting up our entire neighborhood. We're going to look at. A bollif out there with lighting on top of it supplying the neighborhood. So that, number one, the building's too, parking garage's too tall, period, end of story. They have surface lots they can develop on, or they just don't want to. Number two, with the issue that I'm going to reiterate probably everything with Mr. Grossman, Mr. Baird said, West one hundred and seventy ninth. How can you have that as an entrance and egress to a parking garage? It's a residential street. It's two lanes. Okay, there is a park, there is a traffic light there at the corner, but and if we and if we do leave one seventy ninth open, which. Okay, we've discussed having the entrance and egress on Lorraine. We've been shot down. They said, forget it, we're not doing it. So by putting on one seventy ninth, you're going to funnel probably at least a thousand cars, maybe two thousand cars. On shift changes, plus patients coming and going into a residential neighborhood in front of a residential home. It's only two lanes going in there. Now, what are people going to do on Lorraine when they see the traffic lights backed up? You got a thousand cars trying to pull on to residential street to pull into a parking garage? They're going to start coming through the neighborhood on West one hundred and seventy six, West one hundred and seventy eighth, A Lane. You're going to block up the entire neighborhood traffic. Two times, at least two times a day, probably even longer. And if you're three guards to your green space and all that, the wonderful pictures they show. They're showing nice mature trees that are all grown up and screening the entire project. Well, thirty years from now, when they put the little seedlings in, I'm going to be dead thirty years from now when all those trees are grown. We want, if they put greenscape like that, you better put in mature trees to screen the entire neighborhood. But the the big thing is, and if you don't, I know that people watch one seventy ninth, a lot of people want it closed. If we're going to have this on one seventy ninth, like I said, you're going to destroy traffic in the neighborhood. We won't be able to get out of our houses, out of our driveways. At least twice a day and probably all day long. We already have cars coming through and parking on the street and not supposed to because I don't want to pay for parking in the lot. And the building is just, it's too tall. It's going to tower over the entire neighborhood. But who wants to wake up in the morning and look at a ninety foot concrete building? You don't want to. I'm going to, but I don't want to. You're destroying the aesthetics of the neighborhood. You're destroying the neighborhood. And like they've, to reiterate what they said, what do we do with our property value? Who's going to want to move into a neighborhood and look at that? And not to mention the helicopter. Now you're putting a ninety foot building up there. So obviously, the helicopters are going to fly in from there. They're going to fly right over the house like they do right now. And I wave at the pilots coming down. And that was supposed to be, and that was shot down. I was with all these meetings thirteen, fourteen years ago. When they did this and everything went through Ohio Supreme Court and said, Dad, too bad, we're doing it anyway. So what's now, and now we're zoned at one hundred and fifteen feet on this building in the zoning change. That parking garage can go up to one hundred and fifteen feet tall. They say, oh, no, we're not going to do that. Who wants to stop them from doing it once they start construction? It's already going to be zoned at one hundred and fifteen feet, right? But no, I'm against the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would it be possible to go back to?
I haven't seen. It's on.
Thanks for having us. I appreciate it. My name is George Gorze. I live at thirty seven forty seven West one hundred and seventy ninth street. The sole remaining house that's not in the cul-de-sac. And on the west side corner of Lorraine and one hundred and seventy ninth is my business. I've been there for twenty six years. Over that time. We constantly hear, good neighbor, good neighbor, good neighbor. I immediately pointed out. Areas we could work on. And it has, the administration has changed in the hospital three times since I've been there. Each one gets less willing to even have any constructive dialogue with the community. Until they start these community meetings. Where they present preposterous buildings and plans. As time goes by and the meetings go by, we finally get to their end game. They know that we got to go crazy. And then we'll get what we want, and we'll say the community is in alignment with us. We're not in alignment with this. I feel as though my councilman and his two predecessors. David Robinson and his two predecessors. I've tried doing it the right way, and it's just, I'm a problem. So several years ago, I started an email chain called Neighborhood Accountability. And I sent it to all the relevant players in the neighborhood, including the Department of Building and Housing. And I asked in that very first email, start a file on your computer. So that when we find ourselves in front of planning and zoning once again. We can clearly present what kind of neighbor. And how the Cleveland Clinic and its administration has abused our neighborhood. I hope you watched the video of the rental property. I forwarded it, and it was supposed to be shared. Anne's house. If you haven't, I can provide you with it. Second of all. Like I said, that's my house. Can we go back a couple slides? Which shows the street and my house and my shop and the new parking garage. It's actually going to be four thousand cars a day. Two thousand in, two thousand out. Two lane street. We have to take into consideration. That one. We have to take into consideration the entrance and exit for my parking lot, both on a one hundred and seventy ninth and Lorraine. And then we have to look at the entrance and exit to my home. How many cars can pull out of that garage? Waiting to turn at the light without blocking my my property. Same thing on the way in. Now, if you're sitting at the light waiting to go left, and you've been waiting because traffic's queued all the way up. And you don't make the light, but you got to get to your chemo appointment, you're going to cut through my parking lot. No light. And that's going to happen with people entering and exiting. The Cleveland Clinic and Fairview Hospital has used. Parking problems and traffic problems as a way to choke our neighborhoods. Make them less desirable. Make us frustrated and want to leave. This is a standard operating procedure of theirs. And sorry, Councilman's Life. Up until these meetings started, and I held him accountable in one of the public meetings about not replying to my emails. I got one. I have two special needs kids. They play in the yard all day long. It's insanity to put that much traffic in our neighborhood. It doesn't work. It just doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, Madam Chair, to members of the Commission. My name is Ian Andrews. Fifteen year resident at thirty seven fifty six West one seventy eighth street. I live there with my wife and two children. Actually, the second house in off of Lorraine, abutting West one hundred and seventy ninth street. I sent you a laundry list of thoughts and observations about the proposed rezoning and development project as a whole. Many of my neighbors have expressed so, so I'll leave those to you to review. I'm here to ask you to consider tabling or potentially opposing the motion for the rezoning as proposed. The rezoning is more than a change on a map. It really is about trust. Clinic's website proclaims Cleveland Clinic is much more than a healthcare organization. They say we're part of the social fabric of the community, creating opportunities for those around us. Making the communities we serve healthier, listening to our neighbors and to understand their needs now and in the future. It states. The health of every individual affects the broader community in that an overall person's health is tied to social determinants of health. The conditions in which people grow, work, and live. Context matters. Since I bought our house in twenty ten, twenty percent of our small neighborhoods' homes have been demolished by the clinic. First batch on the west side of one seventy ninth street for more parking, as you've heard, and we were told no future plans. Trust. The last batch of homes were cobbled together over many years for land assembly. We saw this happening. We knew what it was. After they built a helicopter next to our homes, causing our babies to wake up screaming in the middle of night due to the noise and the shaking of our homes. I pressed for years as to what their plans were for the east side of West one seventy ninth street directly behind my home. No plans. Trust. Then, this is where we're new renewed. Houses were left vacant and rotting. My neighbors and I kept asking, what is happening? Why are they falling into disrepair? Take care of your properties as we are expected to take care of our own. Then in October twenty twenty three, we learned from a gas line representative, not the clinic, that this batch of homes were slated to be demolished, which I find interesting, though disrespect to the people presenting. The slide showing the image on the far left of May twenty twenty three, a seven story MLB with a six story garage. We didn't learn anything until October of twenty three, and we're being told the whole time, no plans. That's new today. We do celebrate the clinic's immeasurable medical successes, and I know I'm on time. At their many campuses around the globe, my cancer is in remission today, thanks to their tremendous doctors and their credible nurses and technicians. Both of our children were born at Fairview Hospital after we walked to the facility because we really live that close. Walked to give birth. We don't celebrate it the ways that they've shown a lack of commitment to the community, the community directly adjacent to their campus. They're indifferent to the trauma some of us experience, especially Jordan and his family. From Fairview Leadership, issues with patients and visitors yelling, fighting, urinating on the street, loud music all hours of the night. Poor deterioration and demolition of our housing stock. Well, they're not only deflecting, it's a road of the goodwill they seek. I'm almost done. These two come into valuable homes, the biggest investment we've ever made. Once construction begins and when we're in the shadow of a mini main campus in a single family neighborhood. I'm not anti-development, nor do I seek to halt the ability of the clinic to care for their patients, but what I do seek is to find balance for a project that is being built in a single family and residentially zoned neighborhood. Chances are decent despite stating no plan. This continued march north and east won't stop. The clinic cannot move any further south due to illegally binding agreement with that neighborhood, so they look to us. We seek to stop further intrusion. We seek a similar legal agreement with our friends to the south, to the south that they secured. We seek a community benefits agreement, and we seek to be treated not as an impediment, as equals as property owners and as neighbors. Legacy distrust undergirds this entire project. The trust has been broken too many times. Help us hold our neighbors accountable. Help us find equilibrium. Help us ensure the conditions in which we grow, work, and live result in a positive social determinants of health for all of us. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else online or here who is opposed to the zoning change? There isn't anybody online?
Yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Barbara Haas. I also live on West one seventy ninth. I'm at three seven zero six. And I've been a resident there for fourteen years. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my fellow neighbors. Dr. Grossman, Dr. or Mr. Baird, Mr. Knoll, Mr. Gorze, and Mr. Andrews. I won't repeat any of the points that have already been made, but as a female living in that area, I just have some concerns about my privacy, my safety with this new development. I really feel strongly that the traffic should move to the west side of the project versus funneling the traffic onto our street, West one seventy ninth. I feel like the hospital hasn't compromised with us. They do say that they've been listening to our suggestions, but I don't really feel heard. I feel forced out of my house. I feel like either I have to sell or put up with my devalued property. And this has just really been a concern for a number of years, and I hope that you'll help us in any way that you can. I appreciate your time today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting, so we will close any comments. We that we are closing the public portion of the meeting. I will ask for Commission members now to. To ask any questions of either staff or the applicants or for discussion. We do have three separate matters, so how we will proceed will be each of them individually.
So there's a lot of, before we get into some of the design questions and the recommendations from. The local committee and a lot of the concerns that you can hear about kind of the design and the lighting and all of those things. Just say, you know, this is, this is obviously been a, this is not without controversy. I think that'd be the understatement of the day. And another, I'm sorry, August. This is not without controversy, and and as you can tell, there's, there's a real skepticism within the neighborhood about what the Cleveland Clinic's future plans. Beyond what is even being presented here. So kind of narrowly to the zoning, as I was working with planning staff to understand what zoning would need to look like. To allow for anything to happen, whether it's what's being presented or some some other version of it. The reason we, this is my second engagement with the institutional zoning. The first is around Franciscan Village and Our Lady of Angels Church. So be this, this would be the second, and and what I see as a benefit of the institutional zone is that it gives this body more power to more or less compel. The Cleveland Clinic to be more transparent and forthcoming with what plans would be in established campus. And as I see it included in this area that would be rezoned into an institutional use is the location of the. Existing parking garage and the existing medical office building that will become surface parking. At the end of what's being proposed, and therefore, in my mind, become a redevelopment site that is not affecting additional land. that is not affecting additional land beyond what it currently owns. But by establishing this campus through the zoning, it that's the expectation from the city of Cleveland that the ability or desirability to move and croach further towards residential areas and into residential areas to accommodate campus expansion is contrary to what would have been established as as the official campus. So I, before we get into design, I wanted to just explain how planning staff and I came to that conclusion for this specific zoning type within what is currently the hospital's owned land. That's there, and I'm sure there'll be more.
Madam Chair, to the audience, I I feel for you. I'm empathetic. I I live near the main campus, so I feel your pain. I I think what I might want to talk a little bit about is planning and and the importance of being transparent, the importance of being engaging, the importance of leaning into community. What I have a concern about is not particular particularly this project, but the overall plan for this campus and understanding what the intentions are, not just today, not just tomorrow, but maybe five or 10 years from now, so we can totally understand the overall impact it's going to have on this community, on our city, and 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 on, quite frankly, on 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 the residents of this community.
Madam Chair, I just want to echo Vice Chair's comments. The dedication of the residents of this neighborhood are clear. We have folks who have great recollection of meetings and events that took place thirteen, fourteen years ago. I think the residents that provided testimony today also are acknowledging that there are benefits to the clinic, right? We have a resident that expressed the birth of two children. We have folks that are expressing support of, you know, the medical services. So it's not that there's a just a blanket opposition to this institution. But I think what is clearly missing is just this connection to translating the words that they have been communicated by the clinic to residents and seeing that happen in practice. And I think I just want to close on strongly on Vice Chair August's comments about us having a full understanding of the overall plan in order to make a decision because it would be a disservice to this community to to move forward with a portion of this zoning change without having a full understanding of of the full breadth and depth of what is to come for this campus.
Madam Chair, to the applicant, I'm not sure when this was presented before. If we got to see the studies of entry off of Lorraine and why that has been kind of thrown out the window, I will say that what's kind of disheartening about a lot of these large developments with all the kind of design that goes into the building, it seems like there's little that goes into the adjacent spaces, the procession to the building, the to and from. The streetscape that I think you've shown that seems like it has development, really doesn't seem like there's any development. There's kind of conflicting imagery shown in the section, then also the perspectives, the the streetscape looks like it's bare in the sections, about four trees along like a three hundred foot length, but then in the perspectives, it seems like there's a rhythm of trees. Is it accompanying or or inviting people to sit? We're talking about a campus and kind of the procession from north to south. The streetscape, if actually developed well, would actually really do that. I think about the Zen Garden space along to to the west that kind of just looks like a circle with a bench in there. The kind of thought that there will be some development to the green spaces on the east, I I think again, what what is kind of sad in 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 kind of this is that what the residents are kind of remarking is that the the landscape adjacent to this kind of monolith of the building hasn't been studied with the kind of the fervor and the and the the necessary detail as the building has, and I think unfortunately, you know, in in good conscience, that's that's not necessarily something that I personally would like to support. And then without seeing why, again, I I think, and I don't know if it's been presented before, the entrance off of Lorraine is nonviable or shift in parking garage location, nonviable to kind of alleviate the kind of the the traffic on on the on the eastern side. Some of these things that I think it from the resident's point of view seems to be presented over and over and over again. And I'm not sure if they have been tested to to a sufficient like ability to to kind of prove that they're nonviable.
But wondering if we could do like staff report and if the Cleveland Clinic could come up and answer some of those questions.
Okay. Which question specifically?
Oh, that's are are we still focused on zoning specifically, or are we talking about design as well?
I mean, I think we're talking about everything, but we'll do three separate motions, but is there a staff report?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name's, oh, yeah, louder, okay. My name's Nate Law. I'm the neighborhood planner or city planner for the far west side of the city. I believe you have a copy of the motions from schematic review this week at Far West Designer View in front of you. I don't know if you want me to rehash those. They put a number of conditions on the approval at schematic level. A lot of the stuff we're talking about today in terms of further development of the streetscape, further development of the green spaces, needing, you know, better screening for the parking garages. For the parking garage as well as the material palette needing to be a warmer, less institutional feel. In terms of staff feedback, we've been, you know, in on this project, working with the community and the clinic for over two years now at this point. We've been to eight public meetings about the project, I believe. And we, you know, see a lot of the same conditions that were placed on them by the designer review committee as being really important to the project in terms of, again, like the parking garage screening. I don't think that the cloth material, we don't think that the cloth material is going to be appropriate or durable in the long term for screening those impacts to the residents, so we'd like to see something more creative, more durable, and a warmer color. You know, in addition to that, obviously, in the first meeting, they showed a surface parking lot as Lot C, and it was one of the comments from this commission that they developed that as some sort of green space that can be utilized by their patients, staff, and the community. We're very supportive of that being a component of this project and and really need to see that developed further before any final approval is given. Additionally, some of the comments around at the designer review committee focused on the opportunities for public art as well as, you know, gateway signage into this neighborhood that really uplifts the neighborhood and and beautifies the street on Lorraine. We're very supportive of those conditions as well. In terms of process and next steps, this will need, this should go back to our pet pot committee that will be reviewed by all of our city departments for like public safety, water, all those different departments. Bring this back to them at some point in the near future before final approval is given. They'll also need to submit a transportation demand management plan, which is a new requirement for large scale development in the city. And we'd also, they'll also need to submit a a full lighting plan and a full landscape of plan, a landscape plan before final approval is given. So those are sort of our comments. We're very much in alignment with the schematic designer view conditions that were placed.
So so kind of more more broadly, and you know, this, as as Nate said, there's there's been a first hosted by the clinic, subsequently hosted by the Development Corporation, and and we've been trying to kind of take a bite at the apple of different aspects of this, so for example, to Drew's point, we have not scheduled yet, the intention is that sort of community meeting that would be specific to a green space design would look like. Just knowing that if we're trying to cover design and green space and traffic and all of these things and meeting after meeting, it did get a little unwieldy. But you know, what what the Cleveland Clinic seeks to do is essentially a replacement project of current parking garage and medical office building. And prior to my time on city council, there's been, there had been a pre-cero engagement between the city and the clinic. As I understand it, the clinic is divided into regions. The west region basically goes from the Tioga River out to Sandusky and kind of that operates as almost like a like its own system within a larger clinic, of which I would, I guess you could say Fairview is something like the flagship campus. And as well as facilities in Avon and then out into Sandusky. And, you know, the goal of the city has been ensuring that the tension of services, the jobs that come with them remain in the city of Cleveland and not elsewhere has been a goal all the while, knowing that this is a denser environment, we're up against a valley and trying to find a way to do so in a way that can be as sensitive to the surrounding community as possible has been a challenge. Say, I kind of have my list of ongoing questions of of my own, but you know, for example, we've been talking at length and and with city traffic about, you know, it had been brought up that egress out of this neighborhood is challenging and people rely on the one traffic light, so there's ongoing conversations about installing a new traffic light on Lorraine at another location and even blocking off one hundred seventy ninth, which would have the negative consequence of pushing all the traffic there, but maybe the benefit of keeping clinic bound traffic off of other side streets, as well as exploring legislative ways to kind of do resident parking only. Some of my questions kind of going forward and knowing that this is the schematic phase, so things that I'm interested in kind of digging down into as things move forward, and sort of in no particular order, the green space design. And again, I want that to be a community, I would want that to be a community led thing and and really speaking to what the neighborhood wants, not what the clinic or we want. There was brought up in the community meeting that the parking garage stairway is proposed on Mr. Goresay's property and it's all glass. Is there a way to, so if you're on his property and there's people coming down a parking garage, you're able to look down, is there a way? I don't know, or some other design that there's, you cannot create, I understand the clinic's desire for openness and visibility, but it's a bit of a double edged sword. Is there a way to do so in a way that feels less invasive to in the direction of of the property? Lots of concerns about lighting on a parking garage, and quite frankly, the existing parking garage is maybe a great case of how to not do lighting. It does sort of tower over, I say, they seem to be old bulbs that transmit a lot of light pollution, so what is the lighting scheme and the types of lights and how are they positioned so that nothing would be bleeding into the neighborhood to the best of our ability? Many concerns about people dropping off on Lorraine Avenue, patients as a kind of path of least resistance. And what does the city and or the clinic need to do to discourage any kind of behavior like that? And I will just say on the record, the helicopters are an ongoing issue. It is, there are clinic helicopters, but there are also non-clinic helicopters, and there's been an agreement about the takeoff and landing path. And a very frequent email from my office and the Development Corporation is to the clinic asking for, you know, you have the Flight Radar app and you can kind of see where they go and you're standing there and watching it. And it does create a leave life issue for the surrounding neighborhood, especially the most local streets, and and I'm bringing it up just to say once again, all that can be done to mitigate that by the clinic is requested because it is exceptionally noisy. So those are, those are some of my my design review combined. The last one is a two, two more. I agree with the issues about, it's it's great to show a thirty year growth tree as part of the landscaping plan, but we're here today. I'd like for a landscaping plan to include species and growth rates so that we can understand what do we need to be planning now that's going to grow quicker? And what do we need to plan now that's going to look really majestic at some later point? But not be lulled into a false sense of security by pictures of full growth trees, one. And two, I brought this up with other projects, so I think that this is a consistent thing, but especially since we're next to the valley and we are looking to plant trees. I I hope that we can continue to take a stance on kind of the bird deflecting glass so we're not ending up with birds coming out of trees and whacking into a building as we see downtown and contributing to something like a billion bird deaths in the United States every year. So I know that's a little bit of a tangential aside in defense of the birds, but that's that is a big issue in how projects that have come to this committee in previous decades have been approved, not taking into account wildlife engages with stuff. So that's, those are, those are those are my design comments.
Madam Chair, I'm going to take a swing at this. All three, because I, I think in principle, I I have an idea how we should handle this. First of all, I was born at Fairview Hospital, nineteen sixty three. I was raised on the west side. I've used the hill into the park, which is a dangerous proposition, so I understand this neighborhood. Still have family living in the West Park area. So having said that, and and understanding the concerns here, hearing submitted, I would like to on item number design, item number no, under the map change twenty six, twenty seven, nine, I would like to move to approve the zoning change, because I think we agree in principle that's a good planning move for everyone. That's my motion to approve it and submit it. I want to get through this first, and I'm going to go through the other two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or question? Make sure to turn your mics on. Let me take the vote.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Yes.
Bray Scott?
No.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Flight?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so Bruce, the next item, which is under Fair, Far West Design Review, item number twenty twenty four fourteen, I'd like to move to postpone that decision with the caveat that the clinic go back and 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 come back to us in the design review and the community with a campus plan to 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 demonstrate their intent for the entire effort. The second thing, strong consideration must be given to how cars egress and egress this site, and therefore there should be some effort to demonstrate to us why Lorraine can't be or can be used, because I agree. So that's my motion.
Like to add to the to the motion, the location of the parking garage with the kind of egress requirement of looking at Lorraine, if that can be situated on the west side of the property, and also to include studies on wildlife. qualities of 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 materials of the building.
I I so, I therefore then would like to include what Commissioner Sergeant just identified in my initial motion.
Second, just for clarification. You're sort of asking to come back with all with these, all of the comments and Councilman's Life.
That goes without saying, yes. I mean, I consider
Deliver on all.
The discussion that had had transpired here since.
Just want to clarify.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I think you want to
Yeah.
to come with.
Yes.
And I think staff will have to really work to to maybe get those in clear writing.
But primarily, we need to understand the big picture. You know, I understand about the details, but there are no details if we don't can't understand the big picture.
Okay, so.
Follow the roll.
The motion is to postpone so that they can respond to the committee conditions, return with a campus plan, a Lorraine Avenue egress study and a wildlife study. Okay, Anthony?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Bray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Flight?
Yes.
Motion carries. The demolition?
Yes. Item number FW twenty twenty five zero five, I'd like to move to postpone that item because they're all in a strictly connected.
Second.
The motion and a second. Follow the roll.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Bray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Flight?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Thank you all very much, and thank you for coming out again. Appreciate it. We're going to, we have one more zoning matter as a conditional use. I have a flight to catch, so I'm going to do this one and I'll leave you a design review if that's okay. So the last zoning matter is a townhouse in a two family district. This also goes with the design review on the next page, so I would like to do the same thing as to have the applicants present the the.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I'm just trying to get the picture fast.
Thank you for coming. Oh, can you?
Would you want to sit and go get out there?
Okay, okay, yeah. Um so um there is a zoning matter and a design review case. This is um the Fox and Mount Townhomes in Slavic Village. Um and this is um August, now that I see that they're two together, I might let you do them. I'm gonna read the, I'll read everything and then I'm gonna leave because uh you need to do the design review too. Who, is someone here online who's gonna present? They're online, who, if you are going to present, I'm gonna swear you in. Uh do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Okay, um so first, um Shannon's gonna do the the conditional use. Um the applicant will do the design review case, uh and that is here for final approval. Oh, and there are some conditions. Uh and then August will open it up for public comment um before there's a full deliberation and two motions are required. Um so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
That show's yours. Thanks, guys, uh the last, the last zoning matter. Um so kind of quickly go through it. This is a, an exciting project. It's a scattered townhouse um site across in the Slavic Village neighborhood um between Chambers and Fleet. And so uh as you can see here, this is the proposed townhouse um project. And I kind of just go through each, uh you'll, there's several that need conditional uses across throughout the sites here. The lower right hand picture that you see here, the, the properties on the southern side of Fleet Avenue do not. That's actually a zone multifamily, uh but it is part of the greater scattered project here. Um next slide, please. Again, this is just giving you an overview, just a reminder. Um as you guys are probably coming close at this point of a townhouse in a two family or single family district needing a conditional use from you all. Um and so that is why they are here. All right, next slide, please. So the first one, this is lot C. Again, so they, you're looking at this site location. Is the development visually compatible with nearby properties and scale, height setbacks, orientations to existing street, roof lines, architectural character and proportions and architectural features? And so this is one of lot C encompasses eight units. Um and they've cut out kind of on the corner here and framing it. And so what you can see on the right hand side is the existing conditions along um East Sixty-seventh Street and Seabert Avenue. And then west along Seabert Avenue, giving you the context that it's really kind of a mix. You have a mix of single family as well as mixed use buildings, apartment buildings. Um and then the proposal of lot C along west, um there's just an elevation here showing you what these units look like. Uh that they'll explore more with you in the design review portion of this um presentation. Next slide, please. Uh and so for lot C here again is the development site layout arranged as a way to create visual interest, promote safety, um efficiency and comfortable pedestrian vehicular circulation. And then also conserving the natural features and providing usable common space. And so I will say that each of these are providing over nine hundred and fifty square feet of open space around the units um collectively. Uh again, so to the right is just giving you uh elevations and renderings of what that looks like. Uh additionally, they need it for lot D here along on the north side of Seabert Avenue um in the northwestern view of Chambers. Again, so the building types that they'll go through with you, I believe there were three different building types, each fitting within um a variation of each of these collective lots, if you will. Um next slide, please. And so again, this is lot D, so we did lot C. Uh and this is just giving you more view um what it would look like on the north of Seabert as well as the south of Chambers here within this collective development. Um next slide, okay? And I think this may be the final one. This is lot E that needs the conditional use. Is the development visually compatible with nearby properties? What you see here is the northwest of Chambers Avenue and East Sixty-six, which was, came a few years ago um for this townhouse apartment development. And then again, you have a mix of some single family, uh two family and multifamily units of um along Chambers Avenue. And next slide, please. And again, just another view of what lot E would look like on the north side of Chambers Avenue. And you can see how this section where you see the garages is within that collective or considered the muse units. Uh and they did a great job making sure that those units that are directly facing Chamber and are already established residential streets have a really primary pedestrian frontage with the front door, but also a very large porch, which I think is um done pretty well. Um what you're seeing here, oh, go back one. What you're seeing there with the front loaded garage is actually one of the muse units, which is permitted as long as that first unit is screened. Next slide. Oh, so there's lot F as well. Uh and so again, just showing you what this would look like along at this location at the northwest view of Chambers or the northeastern view, again, a mix of residential uses are existing with Central Catholic uh to the north. Uh and then again, just providing some additional uh parking. So if they have visitors, that is available. Uh next slide. And again, just showing you that front porch. So as you can see, it's quite a large front porch, something that we don't, we normally get just the s- the stoops, if you will. So I think having a great porch here um really can speak volumes to this project. Uh next slide. Oh, there was lot G as well. So again, so here, there's a mixed uses of multifamily. Again, the buildings are all um varying building type, A, B, C, D, E, I believe. Uh and they're scattered throughout this project. Um next slide, please. And so again, just give you an idea what that lot G looks like uh with the muse units here uh as well as the primary unit on the front. Uh next slide. And so I'll allow, I believe, um Alex and Chad uh and potentially Dominic are all here. And Jimmy are all here to talk about um the project and kind of stick to the high level aspects of this.
Thanks, Shannon. So we have two cases here, um commission members. So we're gonna hear design portion of it, then we'll revisit uh the conditional use. And thank you, thanks, Shannon. Go ahead, guys. Dominic, Alex?
Jimmy, Jimmy, you're gonna start, right? Jimmy, you there?
Jimmy O.
Hi, everybody. This is uh Alex Obelvy from LDA. I'm a architect here. While um I'm not sure if Jimmy had to jump off, but um we can run into or roll into the design review portion of this. My colleague Chad Somi is gonna um present our design, so I'll pass the mic to him.
Thanks, Alex. Um it looks like, I'm not sure who's sharing the presentation, but I'll try to do my best to uh direct the uh the slide sharing. Um thanks, uh thanks a lot to Xavier uh from the planning office uh and also Kenya and all of the city staff and planning commission for hearing us today. We really appreciate it. Um so where we are in our uh design review process on this project uh so far, you can see we have seven scattered sites here in Slavic Village. Um we, um as Shannon said, we are going for a conditional use permit for lots C through G. And uh I believe lots A and B are already zoned for multifamily. So I think we're good on those. Uh so um as far as our design review process, um we've attended Pet Pot. Um we were just approved last week at uh design review for a schematic uh with a few additional comments. Um we're gonna meet with uh the fire department in mid, mid April to discuss fire access. Um possibly wide widening the uh the driveways for, for all of these sites to get appropriate fire access. Um and uh as far as zoning goes, we've uh gotten a preliminary um review from the zoning group. Again, thanks to Shannon and Xavier for doing that for us. Uh we're mostly, we're mostly compliant with all of these with a few little tweaks that we're gonna make. Um so going through the basic design of all of these, uh our general approach for all of these uh sites are gonna be uh basically, um can we, can we stay just on the site A for now? Thank you, appreciate it. Um but uh yeah, this is the, this is the general approach with all the sites. Um we're doing duplex townhomes. So every, in other words, every building has two uh two townhomes, two dwelling units, two story, uh two and three bedrooms. Um and these are all clustered around uh uh private auto courts, if you will. You can think of it as a sort of a private drive uh to get for, for residents to get vehicular access. Um we're doing, uh we're doing our best to provide active spaces along the public right of way and uh as well as a mudroom so that people along the auto courts can see into their uh, into their driveway, into our auto court as well. Um for fire access on all of these, we're gonna be, um right now, we're assuming that all fire access will be from this, from the street. Again, we're gonna discuss that a little bit more with the fire department uh in mid April. For open spaces, as uh Shannon mentioned for us, um we're doing for the primary units that face all of the public rights of way, we're doing um generously sized front porches, front doors, all facing public streets uh for those pri- primary units. And uh in addition to that, um the muse units along the auto courts will get a smaller stoop, but all units will have a uh a pretty generous, um it's, it varies in size from site to site. But uh you have it, each other unit will have a generous um side and rear yard space as long as uh, or as well as a rear patio. Sometimes it's a rear, sometimes it's a side patio. But uh each uh, each unit will have a decent amount of um private open space that they get to have domain over. Um for waste management for all of these, um basically, we're planning on uh garbage bins to be stored in the garages and then rolled out to their nearest. Um and the residents will, you know, take their waste out to the nearest herb cut for each site. Um snow removal will probably be part of uh a very minimal HOA. Um there, we're doing our best to provide a little bit of room for a snow removal and snow collection on each site. Um visitor parking, um the lots that are big enough, such as this one shown here on lot A, yeah, and this is along Fleet Avenue in the two family or in that, sorry, in the multifamily district. Um we were able to provide some guest surface parking in the middle, as you can see there. But um and, but uh that won't be the case for each and every site. Um for lots C through G, since those are in two family and one family districts, uh those are more suited for guests to park on the street. Um as one of the conditions of our design review that we got conditional approval for last week, uh we started looking at some lighting studies. If we want to go to the next slide. If you go to the next slide, please, thank you. Um initially, we basically just had lights over the garages to serve to illuminate sort of the pedestrian walkway that connects to the public sidewalk for all of these sites. Um and in order to get a little bit of illumination, we're doing some studies to add a few additional light poles um for all of these sites to promote uh pedestrian safety. That was a, that was a, one of the conditional sort of concerns that we got at design review. Um and basically, our concept for all the sites again would be this. Um over the garages, we'd have that LT one over to the left, that sort of gooseneck uh over garage fixture, contributing to lighting the pedestrian areas. And then um the LT three, that uh shorter lamppost, we would use that to provide a little extra to the areas that the uh the over garage lamps can't get to. Uh and basically, the combination of those over garage fixtures and the smaller lampposts, we're gonna say a maximum of nine feet high on those. Um those are gonna be on timed photo cells. So in other words, they'll work uh with, they'll be charged daily solar. They'll, they'll automatically come on um at dusk and they'll automatically turn off at dawn. So that's kind of our lighting concept for everything. And uh we can just quickly scroll through the next couple of slides here. Uh here's uh what the elevation for that first lot A looks at at the street. And here's a rendering. Um and here's a rendering from the back of the driveway there, little aerial across the street shot there. Uh moving to lot B, um it's basically the same as lot A if we want to keep scrolling. Um it's just a couple of properties over to the right. Um and it's a ba- it's essentially, uh it's essentially the same concept as A. It's basically just half. Um we are gonna move the street front building back a little bit. Um we do have a little bit of a setback issue there. We might have to eliminate a surface parking spot there. Um but we feel like we can uh, we can make that work um with the setback. Um again, there's our lighting concept, same, same concept as as before with the garage lights.
But pardon me, Chad, hey, Chad, I'm sorry, we cut you off. Could you just, we got the idea from the first present, first site? So we can just go through and identify the sites and and identify anything that might be different? Thank you.
Sure thing, yeah, we can keep scrolling through. Um not much is different for um any of the others. The major, the major difference with this one is that you have a longer auto court with lot C. Um got different combinations of colors that we're working with. Um lot D again is a, is a larger one. So again, we're looking at adding more lighting as needed to accommodate kind of the large areas of driveway and sidewalk that connect to the public. Some shots of lot D there. Um and then basically lots E, F and G, yeah, it's, you know, it's essentially the same concept. Um E and G are essentially the same as B and F is very similar. It just has the longer building added, same concept.
So so let's talk a minute chat about the materiality. We, we did have a presentation with design review and uh these, these units are selling for just over two hundred thousand. So we have to be um, you know, mindful of costs. So what we're proposing is the exterior siding to be vinyl um on these uh homes. And you know, there'll be vinyl windows, vinyl siding, asphalt chingles. And we have four color schemes and we'll mix it up so that they never, there's never one, you know, a mix. The same color isn't next to each other. So we're given variety with um our siding and tru- and our asphalt chingles will be the same throughout, but the siding uh will, will vary. And in the, in Chad, you want to talk a little bit about that? The two, two colors of siding typically on each home?
Right, yeah, if we could go back to the material boards for a minute where we have the color combinations, thanks. Yeah, basically, um we're do, we're going pretty contextual on the materiality and the colors. Um lots of, you know, most of the buildings in the area are brick and siding. Uh for the street, for the street facing units, like the building shown at the bottom for these, we're gonna do a brick water table. Those will all match for everything. Um and then the muse units that face the auto courts, like the top building, um those will uh just be all uh vinyl siding. Um we're doing vertical board and button along with the lap siding, kind of a combo. Again, going contextual color wise for the most part, um there's a lot of white and gray in the area. So the monochrome, the, the one that's named monochrome is kind of our white scheme with dark trim. Um we have this one, which is the, which I called urban, which is a gray scheme. So those are, so those two are kind of contextual. And then we have uh the addition of this one, which is a blue with a light brown. which is a blue with a light brown to add a little bit of variation. And then we have this one, which is more of a brown kind of rustic look. So again, we're kind of going contextual with the white and the gray, and then we're adding a little bit new with the blue and the brown. But again, all the brick bases will match. Chingles, porches will all relatively be matching for sort of cohesive language amongst all of them. If we want to go, lastly, if we want to go backwards one to our landscape plan, this is basically our concept for the entire site, all native plannings, trying to bring some landscaping to the street front and along the, the auto courts.
Thank you. Sir, staff reporting connected to this?
Hello, this is Kenya Gray speaking, Southeast Side Neighborhood Planner with City Planning. I've been working with Jimmy and the Foxton Mount team for a long time, almost a year now. So they've been through the wringer, I would say, as far as like what their first submission was to where we are now. It's like night and day. I support the townhomes that they're attempting to bring. I like the fact that they're affordable and they're in the middle of Slavic Village where we have a lot of vacancies, so I think that they will address that issue, and there'll, there'll be a lot of new homes for the residents to be able to purchase, so.
Thank you. Any commission comments on this? Okay, all right, I would like to go back to the conditional use proposal. I'm gonna open up for public comment, so those of you who might be in favor, the proponent, could speak now, considering the time of day, we're gonna limit, we'd like to limit your comments to two minutes, please, and I'm gonna count. So is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the community?
Don't see any hands online.
All right, haven't heard none. Anyone opposed? Would like to speak about this conditional use proposal? Few minutes again? Okay, it sounds like we're in action, we hear none. Okay, this public session's closed. Any comments from the commission? Okay, well, who's gonna beg the question?
Can you go back to the slide for the conditional use, just so that they can get that in the motion?
Sure. Thanks, Shannon.
Yes, just want to make sure we're good.
That's fine, cover basis. Is it?
Here we go, this will work. So this is for all of the lots A through G, or C through G.
C through, okay.
Lots C through G on the scattered sites, seeking the conditional use in the two-family zone.
So I will move approval of the conditional use for townhouses in the two-family. Are we doing a blanket or for every single individual?
Just, you're just gonna say lots C through G?
Lots C through G.
Across the scattered sites.
Across scattered sites, based on compatibility with nearby properties and architectural character. Second. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slide.
Okay, we can hear a motion as it relates to item CSE 2024-019?
To the chair, excuse me, I make a motion to approve CSE 2024-019 Foxton Mount Town Home Development.
It's just for final design.
For final.
And I believe also.
With the, with the conditions set by the Central Southeast Design Review.
Thank you, thank you. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries, and I'd like, like to thank you for your work on that. Those layouts, they feel kind of cottagey, and I believe you've met the spirit of the townhouse code.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I will make sure we don't have four zoning matters on the next agenda.
That was kind of heavy.
Thank you, commissioners, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on the agenda on our Southeast Design Review, we have item number 20, 81, 8017 Rawlings Avenue. It's a demolition. We might be here to speak on behalf of the city.
I'm Jillian Galino, and this is the 20th day render out with the demolition. There are three demolish on here, probably the whole, very generally. Party is your own, they were deciding. These, I don't know if they're on the same day. They were supposed to be attempted to demolish, what they sound. So there were never any intent to rehab these structures, or, or, I think they had a bridge to attract new visitors. I am stepping in for Beth, so I don't know, she's the lead on this project, so I'm gonna be in it.
Oh, can you unmute, please? Can you unmute, please? Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
We need to go.
Okay, so this is like an older church that is predelapidated, so this is one of the ones that is gonna come down. This is part of a greater, large-scale project. Most of the properties in this area are already demolished. It's all vacant land. It's been condemned since October 24. Yeah, we've owned it, it's that little guy right there. Don't really have too much, really additionally, you can kind of tell that there's nothing around it already.
I move approval of 8017 Rawlings Avenue, second, for demolition. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slide.
Yes, all right, I believe you're here for the next two.
Yes.
So item number zero two one.
Yep, this is the same thing, property purchased by the Industrial Commercial Land Bank with the intent to demolish for site assembly.
I move approval. Second. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slide.
Yeah, motion carries, and item number 22.
Yep, it is the same thing. It was a property acquired by the Industrial Commercial Land Bank with the intent to demolish for a future site assembly for economic development in the opportunity corridor. Oh yeah, these are bad, they need to go. There's dogs get dumped here, and it needs to go.
Nuisance.
It's very bad, yes.
I move for approval.
Second. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slide.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
The next on the agenda is in the UCL Cor, Buckeye reviewed district.
Uh, postponed.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, you know how I like this list, okay. Apologize. Now, we're now transitioning to public presentations or special presentations for public art. We have Inspire Your City 2025 mural in Ward Four at 9718 Buckeye Road. Who might be here to present?
Mr. Soul is here to present. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Soul. Good morning or afternoon, whatever it is, everybody. I'm here to really field any questions you may have about a ongoing project I've been working on for the past several years and called Inspire Your City. So project that right now is rooted in installing murals on the southeast side of Cleveland. This project was funded by the St. Luke's Foundation, and this particular theme centers around literacy. And so all the murals, three of which you have already approved in the same area, feature children with books. And so that's pretty much the gist. I have a new location on Buckeye that I'm looking to install. And these are some of the previous works that I've done around town, specifically around southeast side of Cleveland. Oh, this is just cool stuff about me, because I'm pretty cool. This is the first mural from the Inspire Your City project. This is on 128th and Buckeye. This is the second installation on 93rd and Mall. And this is the third installation on 126th and Buckeye. And this is a cool map that shows you the, this isn't my cool map, but this is a cool map. And this is actual location where the fourth mural will be installed, so, and this is the concept. And this is some bullet points and notes about community engagement that I've done over the years with this project. This is me with a group of children from John Adams. More cool stuff about me. And this quote here, I selected because it plays an integral role into why I do this work. Any quote, oh.
Oh, here it is, okay, I was gonna try to see if you could get to the, the. I see ours, ours here.
I am. I'm very much in support of this mural. You all did approve this location before with another artwork. I love that one. I also love this one. I think it's very meaningful to the community, as is all the work that Mr. Soul does in the community. It's not in a design review district, so it came straight to you guys.
I think it's kind of, it is, it's not kind of, it is refreshing to see kids with books in their hands and move a telephone. So that, that's inspiring in itself.
I'll keep that in mind. To the chair, I move approval of the art at, or the inspired mural at 9718 Buckeye Road.
Our second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
And slide.
And thank you, Mr. Soul, nice, nice sweatshirt.
Thank you, thank you.
Did he abstain or refuse, or is he not present?
That's it.
That's it, man. Thank you, see you for the next mural.
Thanks, Soul, you're welcome.
All right, and we, next item under special presentations, item number seven. I believe Ms. Petrus is here to speak on behalf of this installation, which is line of sight temporary sculpture installation.
I am, and I believe the artist appears to also be online. He was in transit to another engagement he has, so I'm here to pivot if he's not able to present. So I don't know if he wants to speak real quick. If not, I'll just go ahead with the, with the mural. So this is a temporary installation that should be installed from May to September. It's in the Waterloo neighborhood at 15813 Waterloo Road in the green space. That's the overhead shot, the site, that's a more close-up shot of the site, can go.
And I am here now, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we're on the slide with your 2D artwork, okay.
Great. Go ahead, Tom, but you can.
Oh, okay, so.
I can time in it.
Okay, so the last two pieces you saw were some of his 2D artwork, which this is his translation into 3D artwork. What you're seeing on this slide is when it was installed previously temporarily at the Pivot Center on the west side. You can go to the next slide. So it's a 3D representation of his abstract murals, a burst of color and energy to the lot and a great photo op. This is in his studio where he's building this out. Next slide, please. Again, here, he's painting, and this is what it would look like behind the planting beds that are there on the site now. Next slide, please. So the, it's approximately at the highest point eight feet by 18 feet, by five feet. It weighs between 600 and 700 pounds, constructed from marine-grade wood, spray painted and sealed with polyurethane. Next slide, please. That's the last slide. Okay, so again, it's a temporary installation in the Waterloo Arts District. I am in support of this, at this site. We also, we're doing this a little backwards. The applicant did get his information in time. I missed the email, so we're coming to you guys first and then going back to Northeast Design Review afterwards, just to keep him in line. And in consideration, I've got a very heavy public art agenda for the next planning commission meeting, so we're working backwards. We did get a, a letter, an email of support from Councilman Polenzic, which reads, "Now that's art. I saw the color rendition of the proposed art. I like it. It is whimsical and colorful. It is positive and something like I see in Tremont and Detroit Shoreway. What we need is uplifting art and pleasant to look at for all." The, one thing he did ask about was maybe putting it in front of the, the garden bed, although I don't know if that might pose an obstruction for the right of way, but that's just something he asked about, but he was definitely in support, as am I. Bob, did you want to add anything?
I did reach out to the gallery owner with any questions about proper spacing, so that ADA accessible. I am waiting to hear back. I, I paid a site visit there a few weeks ago. I do believe, I don't want to guarantee it without proper measurements, but I do believe there is enough room to have about four feet of space minimum on all sides. We are looking into that currently. I should have an answer, I'm hoping by this weekend.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, commission members. I would say if there is room to situate it in front of the garden bed, we should, we should do that.
In front of the.
Yeah. If it, if there is room to have it not be obstructed by the low wall, it'd be great if it could sit right next to the right of way. But if there's not room to adequately do that, don't, but, yeah.
Bob, do you know about how much space there is between the garden bed and the sidewalk?
Looks thin, but I.
Yeah, I, I think it's too thin to sit there by a few feet. There, there is ample space. There is ample space behind the garden bed, but it goes on like this.
Right.
So that was my only concern.
I think what would potentially help, it seems to be situated right against the bed. If we push it back a little bit, I think it will help view the base of the, of the sculpture, of the, our piece right now. Because of how close it's to the bed, the base of it is obscured, but if you push it back a little bit, I think you'd probably get a better view from it.
Yeah, I'm gonna try and look into that. I do remember part of the ground there had a slight slope. So I'll just have to see if it's slope because any stability issues, but it was very mild, maybe like a 10-degree slope at that. So I will look into that as well.
And I did, when I mentioned to him making sure there was ADA clearance that might get addressed with moving it back from that, but we did talk about that.
Yeah.
To the chair, I approve the art line of sight, temporary art sculpture installation.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luca?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries, good luck, guys.
All right, thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Okay, we're, we're lining the corner in our marathon here. There's a special presentation for Cleveland Moves. Now, we do have, before we do this special presentation, who might be here for mandatory referrals? I, if you don't mind, we could entertain that first. There's no vote on a special.
No, this is a vote for adoption.
Adoption.
It is for adoption? Ooh, okay, well, all right, I'm sorry, I didn't know. Okay, well, go ahead.
Awesome, good morning. Let me just make sure, is it in the right button? Good morning, it's good to see you all. I know it hasn't been too long since the last time I was here. I'm really excited to share with you today, Cleveland Moves, our five-year multimodal transportation plan. This is required by our Complete and Green Streets policy. We'll complete an update in five years and every five years after that, as required by the policy. And this also serves as an update to our City Parts of School Plan, which gives us access to funding on an annual basis that we'll be able to apply for. So really excited about this, has been a long time in the making. Okay. Okay, so gonna try and go through, quickly through these slides. I know we're pressed for time today, but the vision for this whole plan is that Clevelanders deserve safe streets. And we set some more specific goals within that, safety and comfort being one of them, convenience and also centering the community. So we worked really hard to reach all different kinds of Clevelanders through all different kinds of engagement. We've been working on this since last summer. We started engagement in June 2024. We carried that throughout the fall and the winter and wrapped up engagement in February. And so we feel really confident that we put together, and we're really excited to bring it here today. Um, and so we feel really confident that we put together and we're really excited to bring it here today. Um, and we'll be shifting right into implementation. Like I said, this is a five-year plan, so we have five years of work ahead of us. Um, and then more work to update the plan once we get there. Uh, so we'll go quickly through the community engagement slides. We did all different kinds of events. We really focused on in-person events, reaching people where they were instead of in-person meetings. We focus on high need active transportation areas, as defined by the Ohio Department of Transportation and our high crash corridors. In our second round of engagement, we went back to, uh, focus groups that we talked to in the first round. And we asked them to give us feedback on our recommendations. And we saw a stark difference in our online and in-person engagement in both rounds. Um, really highlighting that our online engagement was almost eighty-five percent white folks, um, which obviously is not reflective of us in Cleveland. We use story cards and ask people how they preferred to get around. We use truth or myth to educate folks on different transportation myths. We have smaller focus group sessions where we are able to get quotes from folks. This is someone who doesn't ride a bicycle often, um, but sees the benefit of separated bike lanes. This is one of our second, uh, round focus groups. We came back to people. We shared our recommendations. We asked for their input. People were really excited about prioritizing certain locations for, uh, crosswalk upgrades, including high visibility stripings. So when it looks like a ladder, pedestrian refuge island, where there's that spot to pause in the middle of the street and look the other direction before you continue crossing. Um, things like that. So focusing on our high need, high crash corridors, mid block crossings, near schools, near rec centers, things like that. We also came here last month, or two months ago, um, we went to city council, mobility and transportation committee. Uh, we had an online interactive map for both rounds of engagement, allowing people to comment our network and what's currently existing. And we heard a lot about maintenance, dangerous driving behaviors. People really want higher comfort infrastructure. They want better street lighting. They want more speed tables, more raised crossings, um, and they want more secure bike parking. I'm going to go really fast through the existing conditions. We have been through all this the last time we presented, but this is our success metrics that we're setting with this plan. So making sure that we're prioritizing our high stress crossings first, making sure we're prioritizing access to high comfort bikeways for all Cleveland households. And looking at where crashes are happening across the city and measuring those as we work to achieve vision zero, AKA eliminating all fatal and serious injury crashes on our streets. So shifting into our action plan, we have two main types of infrastructure recommendations. One is our bikeway network, really highlighting that. High comfort bikeways are great for people who ride bikes. They're also great for everyone else. If you're driving a car, people are more likely to be going safe speeds. If you're walking on the sidewalk, there's more space between the moving vehicles and you. It's an all around win for everyone when you add in separated bikeways and high comfort bikeways. And we also have systemic practices, which are things that we can implement across the city, like pedestrian refuge islands, like traffic signal timing changes, things like that. So going through, here's the list of all the different systemic safety recommendations that we have. Signalization practices, we're committing to adjust signal timing on five zones or corridors each year. Downtown is one of the first zones. We've already started to retime some of the signals here. Uh, looking at how we can implement leading pedestrian intervals to give pedestrians a head start, so right turning vehicles aren't starting to turn before people have a chance to step into the street. Uh, shortening signal cycles, all that stuff. Um, as we do our signal timing adjustments, we'll be auditing crosswalks in those same zones. So as we are upgrading signal, or changing the timing for signals downtown, we'll be able to look at all the crosswalks. So as we go through that and make sure when we have grant funding opportunities that come up, we have, this is where we would add these improvements. These are the highest stress crossings. We're ready to go with all of that. With bike infrastructure practices, in addition to our bike network, which we'll get to in just a minute, we also will look at adding, uh, additional pieces to make them higher comfort and just more in line with what best practices across the country. Um, so that can include bike boxes, bike signals, protected intersections, where we're really reducing vehicle turning speeds and reducing the amount of time that people on bikes are exposed to traffic and intersection. Um, one thing I do want to flag, we have green paint on here, but we want to be mindful with all of this work on prioritizing. We have limited resources. We will always have limited resource, or we, we have limited resources in this federal administration. We're not sure what the federal funding situation looks like. So being thoughtful about where we use all of this, especially green paint being one of those expensive items. A lot of our projects will include road diets, um, which is just reducing the number of lanes. One of the common misconceptions we talked a lot about during the planning process was, uh, that road diets increase traffic. But this is actually proven to make things flow a little bit better. It's also safer for everyone. Again, whether you're in a car, whether you're on a bike, whatever it is. Um, so the most common road diet that you see at the federal level in terms of research is a four to three road diet. We have many of our most dangerous streets being four lane roadways. Um, so if someone's taking a left turn, they're stopped in the traffic lane. People are weaving around them. So looking at adding internally, and so we can get folks that are turning out of the moving traffic and freeing up space for us to add in transit lanes, high comfort bikeways, other things like that. As far as other systemic practices, we are looking at lighting, speed tables and speed humps, mini roundabouts, centerline hardening. Lighting is, uh, one thing that we heard a lot, a lot about from folks across the city. Um, they want street lighting to work better, and we know from research that has a huge impact on transportation safety. With this work, we're committing to work with CPP to figure out how we can strategically improve lighting around the streets. This is a really hard issue to solve. It's not something that we have an easy answer for today, but we heard folks loud and clear during the engagement process about this. Uh, with speed tables, we're expecting to install over a hundred more this summer. Um, and continuing to expand that, we can prioritize speed tables on our neighborhood greenway bikeways. We can also prioritize them on our higher speeds neighborhood streets as we have in the past year. We have mini roundabouts right now on Franklin Boulevard. Hopefully you've all seen them at this point. Um, I know that this is a newer treatment in Cleveland and we're still kind of, uh, hearing different feedback from residents. Um, but this is a really great replacement to signals. It reduces idling. It makes it easier to bike down a street. Um, and in long term, it can reduce our maintenance costs of having to take care of signals. Yes, it's safer, very good. Um, so we heard really great feedback from city council when we went to present to them. Um, and are really excited to continue expanding that practice. We're also committing to implementing centerline hardening at ten intersections in twenty twenty five, and then we'll evaluate the impacts. This is a picture of a pilot in Cleveland at Waterloo and one fifty six. Um, we had a lot of left turners. You can see that red truck turning into the wrong way of traffic, and we had a lot of pedestrian impacts, pedestrian crashes with cars. Um, so this slows drivers down. They're kind of forced to realize where they're turning to. Uh, it makes them more likely to see a pedestrian and also reduces the potential of that, uh, head-on crash as well. So excited to install more of that and, and see how it works. As far as high comfort bikeways, I know I've been saying this through the whole thing. I think you all are familiar with this at this point. Um, but this plan is really emphasizing high comfort bikeways. There are some trails included that are underway, but we're really focused on neighborhood greenways and physically separated bike lanes within the existing right of way. When we think about high comfort, we're thinking about the context. What does the street feel like? How many lanes are there? How many cars are there? And we're also really thinking about Quick Build. Like I said, funding is limited. We want to do a lot. Residents are asking for a lot. They want a network that's connected, not a bike lane that takes them two miles and then abruptly drops off. Um, so we can use Quick Build, which is something that a lot of other cities have already implemented widely to make a bigger impact. Um, can we go back? Sorry. Um, to make a bigger impact, uh, over less time and be able to adjust things if we need to. Uh, this is a picture from Minneapolis. They have these widespread. I used to work for the city of Boston. We almost, uh, entirely built Quick Build bike facilities across the city. So this is oftentimes, we're not restriping, we're not moving curbs, we're, or we are restriping, we're not moving curbs, we're not repaving. We're just thinking about striping and adding physical separation for people biking, but also again slows down dangerous driving, um, speeds. Um, on some of our streets for Quick Build, we'll be, uh, restriping the street. On some of them, we already have wider bike lanes and we can add separation in. So as we think about our network, we thought a lot about where do we already have those wide bike lanes? Where can we add separation? And then what are the streets that need to be restripped? Um, and how can we kind of create a balance of those things? The last map showed all of the existing bikeways. This map just shows the high comfort bikeways. So you see the red line greenway, you see the opportunity corridor path. You see the Harrison Giller, um, greenway. This map shows our next three years' vision of what we think we can, uh, make progress on. This really focuses on high crash quarters. If you see Kinsman, Dennison is on there, St. Clair is on there. We've already won funds from the states and the state, and the feds, um, to make progress on that. Um, it also includes some of our wider existing bikeways that are going to be easier for us to upgrade in-house. Uh, and it includes ongoing projects, um, that we already know are happening. We have Wade Park, we have the Superior Midway, um, things like that. This is our vision network with the goal being that in, when we complete this, every Clevelander has a five-minute walk to a bikeway. So it's not, I need to get in my car, I need to load up my bike. It's, I can walk down the street with my kids or my parents or my family, and I can hop on a bikeway and get to where I need to go. So with that, we're committing to building fifty miles of high comfort bikeways. A mixture of neighborhood greenways, which are traffic calmed neighborhood streets. Uh, we're also looking at, or this will also include restriping some streets to add in separated bikeways and adding protection to existing bike lanes. We're modifying signal timing and auditing crosswalks for improvements on five corridors or zones a year. Installing centerline hardening at tenor sections this year. Uh, continuing with our speed table installation with a hundred more to come this year. Including our systemic safety improvements in bikeway and other street projects and, and being prepared to apply for funding, um, as we implement those. And, um, purchasing bike lane specific maintenance equipment. So not only are we building separated bike lanes, but we have a, a sweeper to make sure after a snow event. Or, you know, on a regular basis, we can keep that free of debris. Some things that we think could happen in twenty twenty five include upgrades for Union Miles, West Sixty-Fifth, South of Lorraine, the Fulton Road Bridge. Um, we'll be installing our first parking protected bike, bike lane on Payne Avenue, as well as our one-way pairs on Prospect and Churro in downtown. Uh, we expect to install neighborhood greenways, install our centerline hardening. In addition to all of this, we've also been thinking about supportive infrastructure. People want to park a bike securely when they get to their destination. If they're using our shared mobility bikes and scooters, they're thinking about, we're thinking about how we can keep those organized and out of the right of way so that our walkways are accessible for folks. So we're also installing a hundred and fifty parking meter poles to bike racks. Um, the order is in, uh, and we're excited to get going on that. We also are installing seventy, over seventy shared mobility hubs across the city, again, to provide organization and order to our shared mobility devices. And we'll continue to install that using funds that come from the shared mobility program. And then we'll also be hosting quarterly meetings with folks, including advocates, CDCs, et cetera, um, to make sure that we're keeping folks in the loop as all these changes continue. So I know I went through that quickly. I'm happy to take questions. Thank you for your time and your support on all of this.
First of all, you win the accessory and wardrobe award for your signal.
Thank you.
Please, so I just want the record to reflect that. Uh, commission members, any questions or comments?
Seems like a lot of people want your picture, so I'm doing a frontal.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the presentation as presented for Cleveland Moves.
A second.
Thank you. I appreciate you because I've been on bypass at end.
Yeah.
So, roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
And slight.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All righty. Mandatory referral. Three items. First one, make sure to coordinate to number three two seven twenty twenty five. Introduced by council members Bishop and Harrison. Who might we have?
Hey, um, I was expecting Rick Swatowski to also, I don't typically present our mandatory.
Oh, he might be on his way.
Okay.
Sometimes he.
But I'm happy to.
Sometimes he pops in.
I'm happy to wing it until then.
I want to see if they have, like, special shirt down.
Oh, it's Friday. Yes, that's true. Yes. I've lost, uh, my engineer to time, but again, I will wing it, so. Yeah. Oh, okay, I don't know the process with mandatory referral, but I understand that this needs to be remanded to city planning on Monday through an ordinance that I believe I put on the next page. Evan, would you mind? Okay, thank you. Oh, okay, you got it. Okay, so Stones Levy Pump Station is currently located at the northernmost end of West Third Street. And what is Eagle Avenue and Stones Levy, a confluence on the Bedrock Development Site. Um, which I would imagine is somewhat, um, unfamiliar to many people here just because of the location. Um, I've provided some context. The current pump station is in our development footprint, and we've been working extensively over the last year and a half with the sewer district. And with ODOT to move and improve the pump station to a point, uh, south of the, this is the current pump station. Um, so to a point south on our site. Um, as such, we are requesting an encroachment onto the Central Avenue right of way, um, which is currently a city right of way. This is the pump station to the right of your screen that has sort of a modeled item. This is the encroachment area. Um, Evan, I think you can maybe whip through this, if you wouldn't mind. Um, proximity to our site as we, uh, in, continue our development on the, uh, Cav's Clinic Development or the Global Peak Performance Center. This is the dimensions of the pump station and the proposed encroachment. Um, we've been working together with city staff on this. It includes, but it isn't limited to Rick Swatowski, Suzanne DeGennaro, Eric Westphal, and others. Uh, I think we can go to the next slide. Oh, thank goodness.
Come on up, Rick. You're, you're on cue.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate your shirt today, sir.
Thank you, sir. I knew you'd be here.
So, I've, Mr. Swatowski, I've gone through most of the slides, but I didn't, I know there might be language specific to mandatory referral.
Okay.
Okay.
So what, um, kind of the.
Okay, okay, all right.
Well, then, like, maybe.
Yes, if we're gonna keep going, I'm happy to defer. It's whatever you all think is best. I think there's maybe two more slides. Okay, great. Then that is it. I would.
So, thank you. Just kidding, no. We, we wanted, we wanted to make sure you were around, so.
Okay, thank you.
So, so, uh, I, I assume this legislation is necessary to allow sewage to be pumped out of the flats and into the sewage system.
Yes, correct.
Yes, I, I will move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
And slight.
Yes. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next mandatory referral item for Mr. Item number three twenty eight, twenty eight, twenty twenty five, introduced by council members McCormick, Bishop, and Harrison. Um, authorizing Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to Cleveland Public Library to encroach into the public right of way of Superior Avenue by installing and maintaining. An Ohio Historical Marker mounted on a ten-foot, uh, octagonal post with a foundation. Okay.
All right, thank you. Again, Rick Swatowski, I manage the Engineering and Construction Division in the merit offices of Capital Projects. Uh, ordinance number three twenty eight, twenty twenty five, authorizes Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to the Cleveland Public Library to encroach into public right of way on Superior Avenue. Next slide, please. Oh, it's a little bit delayed. That's okay. Uh, you've seen the main, the main library and pointing to the location that that sign will be placed at. Just a little bit of history on that building. It was built back in nineteen twenty five and it'll have its hundredth year anniversary on May tenth this year. Part to that building being done, the city back in eighteen sixty five, it's, was one of the first cities in America to allow its patrons to actually go to the bookcases and grab books. Whereas before then, they would have the employees get the books and hand them to the folks. Uh, with that building that was built in nineteen twenty five, it was one of the first that actually had reading rooms with book stacks. And the patrons were able to just be together and sit down and read and enjoy a good book. So there's a lot of history with this building. The sign itself, we'll go to the next slide. That, that's not the sign. They don't have it built yet, but that's a tip. It won't, that one's in Little Italy. It's actually cool because it's Italian on that side and then American on the other side. So it's about ten feet off the ground, and because the fact that it is a historic, uh, sign, it has to be on display for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Uh, so that's why it's in the right of way as opposed to in Eastman Garden. So that's all my history for today. My extra notes, uh, we ask for your approval.
And I will move for it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
Slight.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Um, I assume you're here for the next one, Rick.
Yes, sir.
Um, item number three twenty nine, twenty twenty five. Um, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but basically it's another permit, allowing an, an encroachment.
Thank you. We can go, there you go. Thank you. Uh, this encroachment is, this ordinance, I should say, is authorized Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to Nautica Entertainment LLC. Encroach in the public right of way of Elm Street. to issue a permit to Nautica Entertainment LLC to encroach in the public right-of-way of Elm Street. Next slide, please, please. You can see the building has already been restored, and they actually want two encroachments, one's for that staircase and one for the awning. Staircase is five foot, 10 feet deep by 12 foot, 10 feet wide, and still leaves eight feet of unobstructed sidewalk. The awning itself protrudes out at 10 feet and is 11 feet wide. And it's about 10 feet off the ground. Here you can see a schematic and a plan view at the two highlighted areas. That's where the encroachments are at. And if we go to the next slide, you can see an aerial of the, of the location itself. Building has been, uh, restored. Uh, I think they're already booking musical concerts and other things over there already. So, uh, the encroachments are necessary to make it all work together. We look for your authorization.
I move approval.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Gray Scott.
Yes.
Slate.
Yes. Thank you. Take care, Rick.
I love it.
All right, well, this leads us to the, the most exciting part of the, the agenda, where our, our new director.
We have got two administrative approvals.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got excited. So excited. And oh, I ruined that intro. I thought, I'm always excited by the administrative approvals. So I would thought, so who's gonna entertain who to approve that? I, I move to approve, uh, the administrative approvals, uh, thinking, I think it's much more efficient that we're putting TIF projects into administrative approvals since they usually come to us in design and we don't need to be tied up in the financing, so, thank you.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Gray Scott.
Yes.
Slate.
Yes.
Yay. Now for a quick.
I know, I ruined it. Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you so much. So glad to be here with you. I'll keep my report brief since I know we've extended our time a little bit this morning. A couple of quick updates. The first is around staffing. The zoning city planner position that Assistant Director Fields mentioned at the last commission meeting is now live and online. We would love qualified applicants to apply. Along the themes of the Cleveland Moves Multimodal Transportation Plan, we also have open positions at the city for Traffic Engineer and Design Section Chief in Public Works and Capital Projects respectively, and would love to have folks come, apply to work with us to advance that vision that we adopted today. I'd also like to share that Matt Moss, who was previously manager of Strategic Planning in the Planning Commission, has accepted a position in the mayor's office, a senior strategist for thriving communities, working on strategy around transportation and land use intersections. In other department moves, we are in the middle of an office renovation, replacing carpet and a few more spruce ups. So, um, just wanted to say pardon our dust for anyone coming in in person. Half of our stuff right now is in room six in the basement.